Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, October 22, 2024 at 5:30 PM. We'll start with our invocation. Ms. Joan De Zerro is going to give the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Barbara Withers from the Havasu Stitchers.
Mayor, Council, if we could please pray. Dearest Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight to ask for your blessings, guidance, and wisdom for our mayor and our city council members. We also ask for blessings on the staff of our city who work hard every day to make our city the wonderful place it is. We ask for you to be with our police officers, our firefighters, and EMS personnel who've been dealing with very difficult, dangerous, and heartbreaking situations. Give them peace, Lord, and let them know they are loved by our community and grateful for their efforts to keep us safe. Lord, we would also like to ask special blessings on Councilmember David Lane. He has served our city for decades through his career, his volunteer work, and as a council member. He's going to take time to spend it with his family and see parts of the world. Please give him and his family good health and blessings during the happy time. We thank you, Lord, for all you do, and in your most precious name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for being with us. If you'd like to share a little bit about your organization with us?
Yes, I would. I'm Barbara Withers, president of Havasu Stitchers. We are nonprofit for over 32 years. We are an affiliate of the Arizona Quilters Guild, and we have about 180 members and growing. We are dedicated to promoting the art and education of quilting, and we are also dedicated to giving back to our community with our community outreach program, where members get together and sew useful items that are then distributed to nursing facilities, local charities, and support groups. And we stay very busy with all of our projects and events. And we're very excited to be in the parade this weekend. We're going to have a float that will basically be a boatload of members patriotic quilts. So that's very exciting, should be spectacular. Also with me is Anastasia Swinkles, who is a board member, and she's got a couple of things to tell you about.
So as Barbara mentioned, we'd like to do a lot of things for our community. In the summer of 2023, we got a large donation from the Robert Shank family of fabric and quilting items, sewing items. One of our members, Teri Uller, could not be here tonight, but she suggested that we use some of this to make quilts for all the Havasu firefighters to use on their station beds. We currently, what we estimated, we needed about 100 of these quilts for six stations and a seventh station that's coming, and we wanted to keep those firefighters in our thoughts as well. We currently have eight quilts on display at City Hall for the next two weeks, so please go down and see those. They're beautiful. We will have a distribution event on November 5 at the Aquatic Center at 1 o'clock, where the firefighters can come down and pick out a quilt that they like. The public is invited to attend. We hope you can join us. And some of our future events, we're going to have National Quilt Day in March of 2025, and our next quilt show is in February of 2026. And so please visit havasu stitchers.com for more information. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. All right. Item three on our agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please, call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell?
Here.
Michelle Lynn?
Here.
Jenny Koch?
Jim Dolan?
The resident.
David Lane?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cameron Moses?
Here.
Mayor Kalshihi?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is our consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Koch? Please.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item six is our correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. We'll start with item 6.1, which is a Go Lake Havasu quarterly presentation. Mr. Knutson, did you want to introduce that?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In previous times, we've had the quarterly report that's submitted in writing through my office and then distributed to the city council. In conversations with Acting CEO Lisa Kruger for Go Lake Havasu, and to the team over in the board and the team over at Go Lake Havasu, asked if they could start making these presentations to the city council in person. So they're here to do it tonight, and I think Lisa, and we have a couple of board members that are here to do just that. So walking me to the podium. We have hard copies for all council as well, too. So thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Sheehy and councilmembers. It's been a bit since I've addressed this council. It's good to be back. Thank you so much. We have a very lengthy presentation. I mean, it's not going to, we're not going to talk about every slide. Let's put it that way, or we would be here for quite some time. So I do want to give you the opportunity to ask questions, but if we can't get to all of those questions this evening, we are more than happy to address those questions with you. If you'd like to come in and have a meeting, or I can meet you somewhere, I'm completely available for that for a couple more weeks. And then I also have some business cards here, so if any members of the public would like some more information, I'm happy to provide that as well. I don't know if there is a table out there, but when I leave, because I probably will not stay for the entire meeting, I will leave these somewhere in plain sight, so anybody that would like the information to contact me can find those. The first thing before we get started I would like to do, of course, is acknowledge the people who have made this report possible this evening. Unfortunately, the technology whiz of Go Lake Havasu is our Director of Marketing, Joel Kelly. Unfortunately, Joel has the flu, and he is not going to share his terms with us tonight. So if you're watching, Joel, we miss you and we wish you the best, but we do want to acknowledge your hard work in putting this report together. I also want to thank our board members that are in attendance. Becky Goldberg and Tim Giles are going to be part of the presentation this evening, so you'll hear from them shortly. But we also have several board members in the audience, and of course, we have Councilmember David Lane as our liaison, and City Manager Jessica Knudsen sits on our board. And then we have several members of our staff that do not have the flu here as well. So back in the back, we have Colleen Prime, Sarah Martenson, and Jackie Leatherman. So thank you, and we will get started as soon as I figure out how to run the clicker. I'm in charge of the clicker, so yeah, could be interesting. Forward. There we are. So we're just going to start off with reminding everyone that tourism does play a very vital economic role in Lake Havasu City. We know that there's a lot to cover, so we'll be walking you through the impact that tourism continues to have in Lake Havasu City and on Lake Havasu City's economy in the first quarter. So we're going to get started with an overview. This is something that we feel is very important and kind of a reminder that we like to make. Go Lake Havasu is a 501(c)(6) organization. Sometimes we hear from the community and other folks around the community that, well, Go Lake Havasu is a charity, it's a 501(c)(3). That is not true, so we always like to keep the education going so that people understand we are a 501(c)(6). And if you don't know the differences between those two IRS designations, as we like to call them, there's some information on the slide that tells you that. Here's something that is really super cool. Recently, Go Lake Havasu has been able to invest in some AI, and we have learned that we now have 1.6 million visitors over the past year. That's according to Placer AI. And you can see that we are keeping track of that, and something that's important for you to note, since we have about 61,000 permanent residents in Lake Havasu City now, that one resident is technically responsible for 26 visitors every year. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Becky Goldberg.
So right now, we want to give you a little explanation of understanding what our visitors are and how we relate in the data that we have for this. We're very excited to be able to utilize this data at this point in time. So as we know, our core demographic has always been age 55 to 64, making it the largest segment, but this shows Lake Havasu remains multi-generational, though. If you look at the graph, you can see the different type of age groups that we have coming in over the past two years. The darker purple and the lighter purple shows the two different kinds, and the families and other visitors, and the consistency allows us to make sure we tailor our marketing product to make sure we're having the right marketing going for this. Okay. And again, here's our graphics on that. I'm ready. So again, 65% of our visitors report income exceeding more than $100,000, providing them, well, a lot of disposable income here coming, and there's not enough significant spending gap across income levels. Visitors of all income brackets appear to spend consistently. So it doesn't mean how old you are, it just, you still spend the same amount. And you can look down, this is a breakdown of the age groups that we have, and actually there's spend per age group and the location, a little bit from where they're at, and we noticed that we are going to be marketing more to the people. If you look, sometimes you look in Los Angeles, the spend there is not as high as the spend is from somebody from a different category. Where Yuma would have 157, and you go down to Palm Springs and 211, and all the way down, what was that one again? And Denver obviously has, it's not showing up on the, straight up there. So Denver has a larger spend rate, so we're going to focus a little bit in the Denver market to be able to get more people driving here. Obviously, Los Angeles is bigger because it's an easy commute. 42% of our visitors, San Diego is fourth, but they're well-known to us, so it's easy for them to come here. Phoenix is a key driving market, and now people are planning more visits instead of just being spur of the moment, because they're happy to be more consistent and conscientious about their spend money, what they're doing. And again, Denver seems to be one, it's emerging as a big one that we're going to be focusing on. And again, here's another chart showing the spend patterns based by what they do. Obviously, outdoor recreation outs shines pretty much everything, but you can see that there's a lot of different things that we're utilizing within the town that rates all the way across. And our average spend is higher than it was last year, so we're $235 per time visitor visits us, so we're up 57.5%. Outdoor recreation, again, is a higher one, but the drop this year, there has been a drop this year, and that's across the nation, and that is because of the summer heat and the summer weather. A lot of people weren't doing a lot of traveling, they weren't doing a lot of anything. Nobody was doing anything. It's too hot. And again, here's our lodging. A hotel night stay, we're averaging about $290 for the hotel stays, and based on the booking windows of what we're doing, and we're looking to do a lot of stuff on the shoulders, shoulder years. And the average day is 3.6 days now. And again, here's another graph we're showing. Joel loves graphs, so FYI, you're always going to get graphs from Joel, and he has a lot of acronyms he uses we don't use. So average spoo, it's up about 47.3% in the food spend now compared to what it was for the total, and the restaurants are being 30%. A lot of people are doing Airbnb, so they're spending more on their groceries than they are in the restaurant, because they're buying food for their families and making dinners. Here's a little bit about the economic impact by department. So our sales and events, quarter one, we had five leads, total supportive events was 10, so we have nine definite events, two tentative, and six lost. If you look down there, you can see the revenue generated by each one of those, so 3,079,000 is what we're getting definitely in, and the impact of the ones we're getting in, we might get another almost 400,000, and we've lost about 685,000, and that's not anything that we can control. A lot of that has to do with the ability to have an airport close by for travel. And again, here is the events we supported. This is a list of all the ones we did. You'll look, and we were working to get the Professional Pickleball Association Challenger, and it was a big, big, big event. And again, that one came down to proximity to an airport and ability to have people stay and travel in closer, so that's the only reason that we lost that one. But you can see all the different ones and the amount of money the impact has been on the community. And here's a few more. The group tours, and we lost that again, that was just because of distance that we're going. And I will just say right now, Jackie is working extremely hard to bring a lot of different things in here and being very innovative in what she's bringing. Again, here's a breakdown of the events that we've supported, a little bit more by segment, what it impacts, who it impacts, and come back in the community. And again, this is the reason we lost. Our rates, our hotel rates, our Laughlin obviously beats us out with the casino rate, and proximity to an airport, that's much closer for them. The international, we do have, I want to say, I'm very proud to say that we have a lot of international interest in our town. We had some Germans, Swiss, and Australian, Austrian travel agents come, and they are planning to bring a lot more of their contingents here. They had a great time here, they thought it was an amazing place to visit, and we got a lot of write-ups, and it was very, very fruitful for us. The German, again, that's a 23% rate that they're going to bring people in, so that's 16 major tour operators from Germany that will be bringing more tourists from there next July, so we'll be hosting them coming up. Marketing and public relations and advertising. So this is, this is kind of an overview blocked by where we're spending our advertising dollars, as you can see the breakdown, by partner, the direction we're going, and why we're utilizing it, and where we're utilizing it in the yellow spaces. We'll kind of show you how we spread out everything through the course of the year for our spend. These are some of the media publications that we have been very excited to be part of. Phoenix Magazine, Escape, and by the way, escape, experience, enjoy, and Arizona Playground is our tagline. Our new tagline will be escape, experience, and enjoy in Lake Havasu. And we are proud to be part of the State Tour Guide for Arizona. And just as a new thing that will be coming up in January, we are having a separate website that will be the business end. So that business end is going to show the impact of Go Lake Havasu and transparency. We're going to have our business meeting minutes on there, our financials. Any information anybody's needing from us will be on this business end facing, that we'll have access to that, anybody, all the public, by January. Some more awards that we've received, and you can take a look at some of the different ones we received. Obviously, the best event was the Bloom Festival, of course it was, because that is an amazing, amazing community one that we do. You can look, the community cleanups, we have an amazing community for community cleanups. We have a, we have a local distillery that did well, and hiking is a very big thing here. The park, Sarah Park is an amazing thing, and obviously the channel. Local Tourism's Award that we've won, the English Village, won the best tourism spot for the Havasu News, and the London Bridge, again, was another winner for the locals. And right now, this is basically, oh, this is just basically how we do our marketing strategy broke down, so you can see where we're looking to do different things. We're refreshing our identity, the campaign, the tagline, slogan. You'll see new Facebook ads, new Instagram ads, new Facebook reels, our YouTube page, all of that. We've updated our software, we have a CRM now, which we'll be utilizing more and sending newsletters out to anybody that would like them, and we also have new photo assets being added to our program, so we can have, to leverage that more for marketing. And now I would like to introduce Tim Giles.
Thank you. Thank you, Board. So great to be in front of you in this, it's a different role I'm in front of you today. So I get the somewhat boring part of the report, but we'll roll through it real quick. So, let's see, community engagement and local tourism support. So new website launch in January along with the business end website. We're leveraging a lot of our assets for tourism partners. Part of that, like some of the digital assets, like pictures and whatnot are professionally done, they look really good, and so those will be given to our tourism partners, which will then link back to Go Lake Havasu, and that basically extends our reach without staff doing it. It's, you know, people doing it themselves, but it's our stuff that looks really good, and it's marketing Lake Havasu, so we're really excited about that. As you can see, we all have fancy new shirts on, and so we're hoping to bring a lot of local attention. You know, the one slide that really got me was there are 26 visitors for every one resident. That shows you how important the economic impact is for tourism here, because 26 people are coming in and spending money, driving economic activity for every one person that actually lives here. That's a really good ratio, and that's something we really want to make our community aware of, how important tourism is here in Lake Havasu, and we'd love for the community to be our ambassadors and understand this, and we're doing everything we can to engage with them as well. So fancy new shirts, and just making sure we're known in the community, who we are. You can talk to us about any of these things, and we'd love to engage with you. So here's the Visitor Center impact. This Visitor Center does really good. If you've never been, go, the rest of the, everybody here, make sure you go to the Visitor Center. This year was a little bit tough, everybody knows. I mean, we're still in summer right now, so August was really rough, July was really rough, so the walk-in rate was a little bit lower than last year was, but they still did good. They sell things regularly, and they're pointing people all around Lake Havasu. Yawn, he does great out there. And then, and you guys will have this information, too, if you want to go through it with a fine-tooth comb. Let's see, you're on it. So these are our financial statements for '24, '25. This is first quarter, nothing stands out. Then we got our next slide for the same financial statements, and then our challenges and opportunities. So after COVID, you know, we, here in Lake Havasu, we had a bit of a, we had actually a slight drop and then a huge bump, right? Because everybody was where, and because everything that goes up comes down, so we've kind of leveled out a little bit, and so we're taking this as a moment to then strategize, to reimagine tourism, strengthen our partnerships, and kind of rethink tourism here in Lake Havasu City. Key focus areas, so destination development, partner alignment, getting our partners out there, making sure they're engaged, giving them great assets to use, making it easy to do business in Lake Havasu, or easy to do business through the tourism board as well, streamlining all of our operations, and then we're coming up with creative solutions to leverage the fact that we don't have an airport. And so that, and that was one big thing where we missed out on a couple of big events, and so that's one thing we're really looking into and coming up with some solutions for. And then Ms. Lisa will come up and conclude.
So in conclusion, of course, we want to remind you that we are, we are making ourselves accountable, as well as everyone that we come into contact with, to make sure we're doing our job. But we all know that tourism is our economic engine in Lake Havasu City, and as you can see on the slide, over 1.6 million visitors annually that drive substantial revenue for local business. We've already talked about that, but just to summarize, and our efforts continue to boost local economic growth, supporting both business and the community. We do have a commitment to transparency. The website that Tim mentioned is underway. We had to reach out and get a little extra help with that, just because we do have a pretty small staff, and we can't work 24/7, although some of us would like to. So yeah, that happens. Every action that we take is documented and measured to highlight all of the positive impacts that we are having in Lake Havasu City. Looking ahead, we are, as Tim mentioned also, we are strengthening our relationships with our tourism partners and the local community so that we foster collaboration. We are prioritizing strategic growth to sustain our community's reputation as a top destination. And in January, also, and to summarize, as we've already discussed it briefly, in January, we will unveil our new, our new website and enhanced user experience. This is, this isn't just a redesign, it's a key element of our broader tourism marketing strategy, fully integrated to support the growth and efforts from all angles. As we look forward, we remain dedicated to ensuring Lake Havasu City thrives through sustainable tourism while continuously adapting to new economic opportunities. This slide is just a reminder of the scope that we report to you about four times a year, so that's just in there as a reminder of the things that we are working on. And we are very grateful for your time tonight, and thank you very much.
Thank you. What a great report, and a lot of work that you all are doing. Thank you. You should be very proud of the work that Go Lake Havasu is doing at this time, and we appreciate that. All right, we'll move on to item 6.2, which is announced vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, one regular member, one alternate member, and the Planning and Zoning Commission, one regular member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at www.lhcaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.3 is our city manager's report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening again, Mayor, and good evening to the council. Last report this evening. Starting off with congratulations to you, Mayor, on being named Freeman by the Right Honorable Lord Mayor of the City of London. Sounds very official. The honor of, very good.
Thank you.
The honor of being named a Freeman is a recognition of merit, dedication, and service to civic values. It stands as lasting mark of respect in one of the world's most historic cities on the planet. On the screen are photos the mayor shared with his, this event. On the bottom right corner, from left to right, is Rembrandt Sir Alderman, Michael McCollack, Mayor Kalshihi, the Lord Mayor, Michael Mary Alley, and who made history as the first American Lord Mayor of the City of London and the clerk of the Chamberlain's Court. So very cool, and thank you for sharing. And I'm thrilled to officially welcome our newest firefighter paramedics, Jorge Alvarez, Joseph Palme, and Kanye Wingarden to the team. Additionally, we're excited to have Deputy Chief Garrett Roberts join our command staff officially. These badges are earned, they're not received on day one, as Chief Plathus will make very, very clear to everybody entering the department. The experience and leadership will be instrumental in helping us continue to grow and serve our community. Congratulations to the new firefighters and Deputy Chief Roberts. Thank you to, and Deputy Chief Roberts. Thank you to each of you for your hard work and commitment to Lake Havasu City, our residents, and of course, the team at the Fire Department. Furthermore, I'm proud to announce that the Fire Department has maintained its ISO Class II rating for the community, which is effective November 1 of this year. ISO ratings range from 1 to 10, and lower is much better, with a Class I being obviously superior public protection and Class X indicating no recognized protection. And ISO's Public Protection Classification Program plays an important role in underwriting process for insurance companies and serves as a valuable benchmark for planning and budgeting. And we're pleased to announce our Fire Department has received delivery of three new ambulances that we've been on order for some time, but they're all, we're all in receipt of them. The additions to our fleet will enhance our emergency response capabilities and ensure that we continue to provide excellent care to our community with our brand-new ambulance delivery service. We look forward to positive impacts these ambulances will bring to the, to the, to the community, and Chief Plathus is, I'm told, that he'll have these at, on display at one of the council meetings in November. Vice Mayor Cameron Moses and David, Councilmember David Lane attended the Veterans Resource Team Stand Down Event. Stand Down offers veterans an opportunity to renew their spirit, health, and overall well-being by connecting with agencies that provide resources to help them rebuild their lives. The event was a fantastic success. The preliminary number of registered veterans was 125 that attended. Additionally, seven veterans registered for housing assistance with nation's finest, and one veteran registered with Catholic charities for assistance. Councilmembers Nancy Campbell and Jenny Koch, along with Sarah Legowski and Tommy Martin, representing the Lake Havasu Metropolitan Planning Organization, and Public Works Director Ron Foggan, all attended the 2024 AZ Rural Transportation Summit. Their participation in this important event highlights our dedication to improving road conditions and addressing transportation needs in Lake Havasu City. So thank you for all that attended, and we appreciate all your efforts and are looking forward to the benefits. On behalf of the mayor's office, Councilmember David Lane and Councilmember Jenny Koch presented a proclamation at Haven's 11th Annual Save a Life Walk at Rotary Park to raise awareness- raise awareness for domestic violence. Walking together in support of those impacted shows that our community stands for safety, support and change. City employees showed their support by wearing purple and participating in the annual walk. Vice Mayor Cameron Moses, you shared a heartfelt proclamation from the mayor's office at the Ray of Hope Inc. Pregnancy and Infant Loss 5K Walk Run, where we had 150 members of our community gathered at Rotary Community Park. We are truly privileged to have Ray of Hope promoting awareness and increasing access to vital resources for families in need. In recognition of those affected, Mayor Sheehy lit the London Bridge in blue and pink on October 15th, again, to raise awareness for pregnancy and infant loss. Councilmember David Lane, you attended the ribbon cutting ceremony for the one-year anniversary, time flies, for the Altitude Trampoline Park. We didn't get any video of you jumping around, but maybe that'll be at the next meeting? We have lots of events that are coming up that are happening now and soon to come here in the next couple of weeks. We have our Youth Talent Show will be, be held on Thursday, October 24th at 6:00 PM. And this year it'll be at the London Bridge Beach Stage. On the fourth and last concert in the park, featuring Top Shelf as the band, will be held at the London Bridge Beach Park this Friday. That'll be starting at 6:00 PM. And the Saturday morning beginning at 10:00 AM, of course, is the London Bridge Days Parade. It'll be in our downtown on McCullough. And then later that afternoon, from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM, we encourage everybody to come down to the Rotary Park where we have the Fall Fun Fair. There'll be games, food booths and fun for the entire family. And just not long now is October 31st, and we're excited to invite everybody on behalf of Lake Havasu City Parks Recreation, its first annual Halloween Spooktacular. And that'll be at Rotary Park as well. This family-friendly event offers a little something for everyone, including thrilling activities and tasty treats. And we look forward to celebrating Halloween. So please don't miss out on any of these events. Please attend them all. We did have, we had a concern and, and a thoughtful resident that addressed the city council at a call to the public in September, and she was looking for some more information about her hydrant meters and if we properly addressed the issues that we had with missing meters and the unpaid water bills. And I'd like to provide an update to council and to the public here. The issue was brought up when we were addressing our water policy, that, our water policy that's identified in our city code. Of course, I raised it because it was a serious concern and needs to be addressed through policy and through our operations. Thanks to the action from council, we now have an updated water policy in our city code that says giving staff the tools they need to effectively run a program. And thank you to the Public Works and the customer service teams for tracking down our missing meters and collecting the money owed to the city. And thank you. And finally, thank you to our contractors and other users of our hydrant meters for their responsiveness and all their help. They're helping, being responsible for their meters and their help in identifying meters throughout the community that they need to be, need to be returned. Prior to May 2024, the average number of hydrant meters that had no information was over 60%. In May and June, city staff sent out letters to hydrant meter users, indicating the change in regulations, and the number of meters with no information dropped to just 21%. And then now is of October 2024, just four months after the full implementation of the new regulations, the number of no information meters have dropped to just nine meters. So we aren't done yet and we'll continue to make progress, but we're doing a fantastic job and dropping that down to the number we see here today. Of course, in June 2024, with the new regulations in full effect, we had, we had 5.8 million gallons were accounted for, resulting in about $19,000 in water revenue. Our current process is working and we are well aware of who has a meter and how much they, how much water they are using. The new policy and operational process are resulting in better accountability of our water use in the city and is allowing our contractors to continue to do business in a very efficient manner. And lastly, I would like to conclude my report with a video showcasing how the Lake Havasu City Police Department is enhancing safety in our desert with the two new Polaris Rangers that we received, thanks to the Arizona State Parks Grant that we received to fund these, these vehicles. Of course, our officers are actively patrolling remote areas to combat criminal littering and misuse of our land. Let's all do our part by following the seven principles of leave no trace and respect our beautiful desert. And with that, let me start the video.
The two 2025 Polaris Rangers you see behind me were obtained utilizing Arizona State Park Grants. These UTDs allow our officers to patrol desert areas and address issues related to criminal littering and misuse of the land. The Lake Havasu City Police Department would like to remind you to be safe and responsible while exploring the desert and hiking trails. Follow the seven principles of leave no trace. Plan ahead and prepare. Travel and camp on durable surfaces. Dispose of waste properly. Leave what you find. Minimize campfire impacts. Respect wildlife. Be considerate of others. Criminal littering is punishable as a Class II misdemeanor up to a Class VI felony. Litter weighing more than 300 pounds is a Class VI felony. As a reminder, shooting within a mile of an occupied structure is illegal. Have fun and be safe.
Thank you to Steve Blake for producing that video and for the Police Department for all your hard work and efforts in putting those two new Polaris Rangers to use. With that, Mayor and Council, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. All right, we'll move on to our public hearings. During the public hearings, we will open it up for public input. When you do so, and if you want to speak on an item, when we open the public hearing, just please make your way to the podium, state your name for the record and address the council directly. There will be light indicator boxes on the screens throughout the room indicating the amount of time that you have. We do encourage you to communicate at that time and not wait till the end of the meeting during Call to the Public, because we can have a two-way conversation during that part of the public discussion. At Call to the Public, we can just listen intently, take notes, but we can't have a two-way conversation. We'll start with item 7.1, which is discussion in action for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License Saki Sushi and Grill at 460 El Camino Way. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and City Council, Jeffrey Miller has applied for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Saki Sushi and Grill located at 460 El Camino Way. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 12 liquor license. Happy to answer any questions and the applicant is also in attendance tonight.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams or the applicant? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor motion.
Vice Mayor Moses?
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series Number 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Saki Sushi and Grill, 460 El Camino Way.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Dos Amigos Tacos at 2231 McCullough Boulevard. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Harriet McLaren has applied for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Dos Amigos Tacos located at 2231 McCullough Boulevard. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 12 liquor license. Also happy to answer any questions and the applicant is also in attendance tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions for members of the council for Ms. Williams or for the applicant? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor motion.
Motion.
Councilmember Dolan?
Thanks for letting me fit that in, Cameron. I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Dos Amigos Tacos, 2231 McCullough.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.3 is Resolution Number 24-3791, Appointing Members to the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, an appointment is necessary to fill the remaining term of one regular member vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Commission due to the resignation of regular member David Diaz on September 2nd, 2024. As part of the application review panel process, which conducted interviews for Planning and Zoning Commission on June 10th and June 19th, it was anticipated that there could be one or more vacancies on the board due to the election and members running for public office. The panel met on October 2nd to review the 13 applications on file in the city clerk's office for the Planning and Zoning Commission and recommends that JP Thornton be appointed as a regular member to fill the, the remaining term, which would end on June 30th, 2027. Mr. Thornton currently serves as an alternate member, therefore if appointed, an alternate member position would become available. The application review panel recommends that Phil Annett be appointed to fill the alternate member position with a term ending June 30th, 2025. Both applications were provided to you in your packet and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Are there any questions from members of the council for Ms. Williams? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor motion.
Councilmember Lane?
Oh, I'm sorry. She had a question. I'm sorry.
I just had a discussion.
Oh, Councilmember Campbell?
My concerns on this is, again, there was 13 applicants. I know that we had application review panel coming on June 10th to review most of these. And I, I have already spoken to mayor about it and staff that in our packet, we only have the two recommendations in front of us. And again, I still don't believe that this, I'm not happy with the process as well. I'm getting complaints from community members that say that these boards and commissions are being picked by our staff and our mayor. And in front of me, I only have two applications out of 13. And I really do believe in our boards and commissions and I really would hope in the future that we can have further discussion on changing the way we pick our boards and commissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so the mayor and staff doesn't pick any of them. Every member of our boards, committees and commission has been appointed by this city council. So all of the items are coming through. There is an applicant review practice that we put into place that has worked out fantastic as we had more members of the community have more interest. There was a time we didn't have a lot of interest, but we had 13 applicants for, for these positions. When we interviewed back in June, we were keeping an eye on, on a potential that one or two members of our boards, committees or commissions may be elected to the city council that were running for office. And so we kept an eye on that. You've expressed this multiple times, Councilmember Campbell. I invited you to participate, which you, you did participate in one of the interview panels. And we've, we've had discussion here with council members. We can talk about the way the process works going forward, but right now this is the process that we have, but I appreciate your comments.
And I agree with you. And I know that we talked about, we'll try this and if it doesn't work, we can discuss it later. And so I would like to consider that or for the current council to understand that we only have two applicants and applications in front of us. We could have went to Kelly Williams' office and requested the rest of them. But again, I would really like more of the transparency and I'd like to be more involved in this decision. I respect your decision at this point, but moving forward, I can probably continue to say this.
Please do, yeah. And no decisions have been made until the action of this council. So there's a recommendation from the applicant review panel. But Councilmember Lane, did you have comments or did you want to make a motion?
I have a motion if nobody else has comments.
Please.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 24-3791, Appointing JP Thornton as a regular member with a term ending June 30th, 2027, and Phil Annett as an alternate member to the Lake Havasu Planning and Zoning Commission with a term ending June 30th, 2025.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. And thank you to the gentlemen willing to serve and support our boards, committees and commissions. Item 7.4 is Ordinance Number 24-1348, Approving the General Development Plan and Rezone of 2801 Highway 95 North, Track 2277, Block 2, Lot 19, and the vacated cul-de-sacs of Deepwater Drive and Cactus Run Lane, 10.29 acres from limited commercial district plan development to general commercial district plan development to accommodate a vehicle sales development and approving specific requested exemptions. Mr. Gilbert?
Good evening, members of the council and mayor. The subject property is a 10-acre parcel that was previously owned by the city and sold to Anderson Power Sports by the city council in February of 2024. The property was previously intended for a major retailer to develop the site and the city council ordinance was approved establishing a planned development for that purpose in 2008. That project was never built and the property has remained vacant ever since. The entire east side of the property abuts the right-of-way for Highway 95 with dead-end connections to the residential neighborhood to the west and south via Deepwater Lane and Cactus Run Drive. The cul-de-sac ends for both of these streets are abandoned, but not the existing streets which terminate at the property line. To the north is a major drainage way separating the property from retail development to the north, which was right here. Regarding the zoning map, the subject property is currently zoned C1 Limited Commercial with a PD overlay. The proposed use of the property as a vehicle sales establishment is more consistent with the C2 General Commercial underlying zoning, hence this rezoning application being filed. Surrounding zoning is light industrial to the east, C2 General Commercial to the north, also under a PD, and R1 Single Family Residential to the west and south. Regarding the general plan map, the subject property is and all surrounding property, including the residential subdivision to the west and south, presently identified as CMU-N, that's Commercial Mixed Use Nodal, on the general plan future land use map, which is consistent with the zoning category being requested. I have a number of general development plan slides that are going to be cycling through here, start with the site plan. The site plan part of the general development plan submittal shows the southern 70% of the 10-acre subject parcel taken up by the project. And for the benefit of the public, this is rotated 90 degrees to fit on the screen. So north is actually to the right for reference. Key features are the 25-foot maximum height showroom building that runs the length of the west side of the project on the setback line, and that is here. And extends along the south side, almost the right-of-way for Highway 95. And that is coming around down to here. This building will have masonry bottom portion with metallic upper part that is facing the residential neighborhood and will not have any windows facing this residential neighborhood in order to act as a screening wall in lieu of a second, separate but far smaller in height, perimeter six-foot wall. Interior to the project is the main showroom, offices, service center and the architectural tower features that will have the additional height requested up to a 45-foot maximum. The north 30% of the parcel, and that is this area here, if you follow the mouse, right here, Phase 2, will remain undeveloped, but any future development would be subject to the same zoning requirements. Next slide is the general development plan, the grading plan. The project is requesting a maximum grade of 577.5 for the project, which is over 10 feet below the surface of Highway 95 at the proposed north entrance location, and that is here. So the project will be significantly below grade of the adjoining roadway similar to the Hobby Lobby Shopping Center to the north. This requested elevation is also about where the top of the berm on the west side of the property is currently set, and that is this berm right here. So this elevation would permit smoothing out the site by raising the bottom of the basin up with fill. Next general development plan slide is view angles from the neighborhood. This collection of site section shows view angles from the adjoining residential dwellings towards the project from different locations around the perimeter to show the effectiveness of using the opening-free exterior walls of the showroom to act as a buffer and screening barrier from the activity taking place on the other side, as well as reducing already existing highway noise coming across the vacant property. Note how difficult the 45-foot central showroom tower features will be to see from the adjoining homes, and that is here. homes, and that is here, 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 and on this bottom one here, here, and here, and up on this top one here. So the yellow area is the area that's not visible from the adjoining residences. Next slide. This is the general development plan concept drawing looking from the east of the property. This is simply an artist's concept of the central showroom service center and office area of the project to give a sense of the style of development. Next slide is regarding general development plan is requested exceptions. The applicant has requested specific exceptions to be approved as part of this general development plan that can be approved by the City Council as follows. Condition A, side setbacks shall be 20 feet. B, rear setbacks shall be 35 feet. C, main building pad elevation to be set at 577.5 feet. D, maximum height of the main building shall be 36 feet. E, maximum height of the tower roof feature of the showroom is set at 45 feet. F, maximum height of the perimeter showroom building set at 25 feet. And G, proposed showroom building on the setback to, allowed on the setback to satisfy the requirements of a wall buffer with the neighboring properties. Next slide. This is conditions to ensure compliance with the Development Code. A is the property shall substantially match the conceptual site plan attached as Exhibit A, and that is to the ordinance. Any substantial change shall be an amendment to the general development plan and require Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council consideration in accordance with the City Code. Development of Phase 2 as identified on the site plan, and that is the northern 30%, shown as Phase 2, will require an amendment to the plan development. B, building permits and design review for compliance with the City Code shall be required prior to any construction commencing on the subject property. And finally, item C, all traffic flow upgrades recommended by the traffic study, any additional requirements by the Arizona Department of Transportation and the Lake Havasu City Public Works Department, including off-site improvements to address traffic flow, shall be constructed by the property owner. Next slide. The Planning Commission held a full public hearing at its October 2nd, 2024 regular meeting on this application and voted seven to zero to recommend approval to the City Council. A protest was filed with the city clerk on October 15th, 2024 by eight property owners representing 10 adjacent and nearby lots to the property that is the subject of this application. Staff verified all the protest signatories to be valid and produced a map showing the protest areas and pertinent details. And this is that map. In order for a protest to be valid, the following two requirements must be met. Owners of 20%, number one, owners of 20% or more of the property by number of lots within 150 feet of the affected property subject to the proposed zoning map amendment of change, and two, owners of 20% or more of the property by area that are within 150 feet of the affected property subject to the proposed zoning amendment, zoning map amendment of change. Based on the analysis, the protest fails to satisfy the total property by area as the eight owners control a total of 2.1 acres, with the requirement being for 2.7 acres in order to be valid. Mr. Mayor, this completes my staff presentation. I'll answer any questions you or the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
The applicant is in attendance.
Thank you. Before we take questions from members of the council, should we have the applicant give their presentation, and we can ask questions of Mr. Gilbert and the applicant at the same time? Good? All right. If the applicant would like to make a presentation?
Good evening, mayor, councilmembers, staff. My name is Michael Gordon with Desert Land Group. The applicant, on behalf of the ownership group that owns this property and is looking to move this project forward, they are in attendance with us tonight as well. Mr. Gilbert just put a little presentation up. First of all, he did a fantastic job of outlining kind of the history and the process and the proposed action here in front of you today. I just want to walk through it quick to give, you know, present this to you from our perspective and give you a little background of what we've been through and where we're at today. First of all, you know, a little bit of history, as Mr. Gilbert alluded to, this property did receive a plan development amendment in 2008 for very specific big-box retail use that never came to fruition. And like any planned development that requires a development map, that map being very specific sat there ever since 2008 until this year, when the property went up for auction and the applicant or the owner was a successful bidder. When we were here in February for that council meeting, when it was awarded to the Anderson Automotive Group or the Anderson Powersports Group, we talked a little bit about this and the fact that that planned development that was existing, more than likely, we would be back in front of you with an amendment to facilitate the proposed development that they were looking to create. Ever since that date, we've been busy with ownership, architects, engineers, really studying the site and trying to come up with a development plan that fits their needs from a development standpoint to bring a world-class facility here to Lake Havasu City on the Powersports end of things, complementary to all of their other dealerships and the other things that they do and operate in Lake Havasu City. And I think you can see that in the renderings that we'll show you in a second. When we went down that process, we knew there were some challenges from the site, from the constraints of the surrounding highway, the elevation off of the highway, the neighborhood adjoining it, and the elevations adjacent to that neighborhood, as well as obviously the existing PD that was in place at the time. As we worked through the plan, we came up with what we felt was a development plan that fit all of that criteria, that was something we could actually execute in the field and work with Arizona Department of Transportation to obtain access, which doesn't exist right now today. And so we'll talk about that in a second and how we went through that process. As Mr. Gilbert alluded, you all know the subject property on the north side of Lake Havasu City, formerly known as Kila Ponds. The general development plan for Lake Havasu City is Commercial Mixed Use Nodal, highly intense commercial uses that exist all in this area. So the property is consistent with that, is in the general development plan under that today. Existing zoning, as mentioned, C2 PD, again, or C1 PD, the proposed zoning C2 PD, is consistent with the C2 zoning to the north, obviously all light industrial across the street to the east, and additional commercial to the south, aside from the small pocket of residential R1 and R2 residential that sits adjacent to the property to the east, or I'm sorry, to the west and to the south. The development plan that's on the screen is where we arrived after a series of meetings with the neighbors. So after we came up with an initial plan, we met with the neighbors in April, presented the concept of what we were doing, listened to the concerns of the neighborhood, you'll hear some of those today. Most of those revolve around a couple of things, primarily the existing C1 PD that was approved before, and how that was configured, and how those rights were given at the time. But again, for that specific use, some of which, most of which doesn't apply to the property today, and especially to the proposed action that's in front of you here with this development plan. We worked through those concerns. Some of the other concerns of the neighborhood involved screening of light pollution, that a lot of it exists already today from the existing commercial uses in the highway, but also concerns about how this project is developed and what additional light pollution may or may not come out of this proposed project. Sound, noise, pollution, or protection from noise is also a concern. They have some of that today, but also concerned about, obviously, what gets built, what kind of noise, operating hours, et cetera, will come out of this facility and how that affects the neighborhood. Additionally, there was, in the original development plan, an access proposed in the, what would be on the top right of the screen, to Cactus Ren. After working through a plan, listening to the neighbors, obviously, they don't want to see commercial activity exiting out onto residential street. We feel in our early discussions with engineering, with ADOT, that we're going to be able to achieve the access points needed to have access points only off of the highway, so we don't need to use or utilize or ask for that access point onto Cactus Ren. So as we worked through and listened to some of the concerns, we came back for a second neighborhood meeting, trying to address some of those concerns, in that resulting in the final development plan that you see on the screen in front of you today. Specifically, some of those concerns were not utilizing or not proposing to utilize that access point on Cactus Ren. So that's proposed to be walled off along that side so that there's no access there from this development. In positioning the primary project that you see, two main components, the main showroom building and the maintenance and the operations building in the center of the project, obviously as a retail showroom, exposure to the highway is key. So that was always, we were always trying to position that facing the highway, the storefront glass aspects of it, the marketing aspects of it facing the highway. It's hard to bring this project too close to the highway because of the grade change and the elevations that exist, as Mr. Gilbert alerted, alluded to. It varies along there, but it's a good 10-plus feet all the way across this frontage from the highway down. So in order to transition down with approaches and get to parking and circulation and buildings, the buildings do have to sit more in the middle and towards the back of the facilities physically to make it something that can be built. So as we worked through the locations for access to the highway, the positioning of the buildings, we tried to do to satisfy and address those concerns of the site, but also to address the concerns that the neighbors had. The showroom buildings that are positioned on the perimeter of the one large L-shaped building was positioned there on purpose. First of all, general C2 development standards do have zero setbacks. There are some buffers to residential, but what with, how we've positioned these based on the slopes that are there, we are pulling the building 20 feet off of the southern property line and 35 feet off of the westerly property line. That positions the building on the pad in a location that is close, is close enough to the neighborhood that the architectural feature of the building helps address some of the concerns that you'll hear today and that we addressed during the public meeting. Instead of just utilizing a short screen wall that, you know, doesn't, from a perspective standpoint, do a whole lot to block light, block sound, we're proposing to use the back of the building as part of that screening mechanism, and you'll see that in these renderings. Obviously, the front facade facing the highway, beautifully architectural building, some great details that showcase that recreational lifestyle and sales component of the project. You can see a few that you've already seen here today. One thing to note in addressing how noise, sound, traffic, circulation may or may not affect the neighborhood, the whole goal here is that all doors, showroom doors, service doors are opening to the north, to the sides, and towards the highway, not to the west. That goes a long way in helping ensure that, you know, that noise is contained or that noises or light is projecting, obviously, as much as possible away from the residential neighborhood. Additionally, as you saw in the site plan, you have that showroom building on the perimeter that provides for additional screening. But a lot of thought went into that process and trying to design a building and a site configuration that works. After meeting with the neighbors, there, you know, a lot of concerns about what they see from their backyard. One thing they really didn't want to see was windows for light pollution, first of all, but also not wanting offices or employees having the ability to look down in the backyard. So privacy, obviously, being a big concern and something that we tried really hard to mitigate. These site sections really illustrate from four different locations and residential backyards surrounding the property. By positioning that showroom building where we did on the site, as Mr. Gilbert alluded to, you can see the view angles that are created. An example in the, on the second one down, the blue, the blue illustrated triangle is how low that view angle would be if it was just a six-foot screen wall positioned in that same location. And so you can see, it gives you a little indication of what could penetrate over that wall or what additional privacy you get by utilizing the showroom buildings, the landscaping, the things that we're proposing in the locations that we are. It opens up that view angle substantially and really helps take away visually the view of the buildings, the view of any potential windows, and it helps block light and noise not only from this proposed project, which we're trying to mitigate, but also the existing noise and light pollution from the highway and the adjacent residential and light industrial use, I'm sorry, commercial and light industrial uses. A couple of views from, you know, those locations that you saw in the perspectives, as you can see by utilizing some landscaping, utilizing block material and architectural metal materials and stucco materials, we're going to create a wall effect, a screening effect that will block in its entirety the view of the proposed retail project. A couple of other views illustrating that, helping create that privacy that separates the residential neighborhood from the proposed project. One of the other concerns was any office, any windows or any office windows from the primary building in the middle, being able to, you know, not look down again into neighboring properties. This view shows you, as you look out even the highest glass and the highest windows, you're seeing that showroom building in the distance, the top of some tree vegetation, you're not even seeing the rooftops of the houses below. So any of that will go out and over the top of that in the distance. Development plan, again, just circling back to this, it shows you again that location. By positioning the building, we feel like we're mitigating those concerns that you're going to hear. We worked hard with the neighborhood. We've been at this since February when we purchased the property, and ownership really looks forward to moving this project forward and hopefully bringing a beautiful new retail development to Lake Havasu City. With that, happy to answer any questions that you may have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon, for the presentation. And Mr. Gilbert, I have a question before I open up to my colleagues on the council. The area where the L-shaped building is at, behind that, is that landscaping, or that's not going to be a driveway?
No, no driveway, no access whatsoever. So the green on the left of the screen, so in that 20-foot proposed buffer setback area would be landscaped. Some of it's a slope in different directions, so positioning the building helps us address the slope and the drainage that exists, and then it will also be landscaped in that area as well. So you have not only the building, but you have some trees and landscaping. One request from the neighbors was no palaverde trees. We put that in as a restriction to try and, you know, it's a balancing act, right? You get some green, you get some landscape, so it looks better and it softens it, but also you don't want the mess. So no, there's no walkway around the building, there's no doors out of the back of those showroom buildings, there's no windows that open out of the back of those showroom buildings. And then what, what you see at the top of the screen extending along the west property line where the showroom building stops is a screen wall and additional landscaping to completely secure that, that edge of the property. And same thing going to the highway from where the building stops, a screen wall would come off the corner of the building along the property line with some landscaping out to the highway. So completely enclosing off that area. Obviously, someone's going to have to get in there once in a while to maintain the landscaping, but that would be the only access behind the buildings.
Thank you. Are there questions from members of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Can you go back maybe two slides slowly? That one right there? Is that the, is that Deepwater Lane right there? Is that where that was?
Yes.
The cul-de-sac, and that's Deepwater Lane?
Correct, yes.
The cul-de-sac will no longer be there anymore.
Correct. The cul-de-sac right now exists on this property and is being abandoned. So what you're in essence seeing here is the cul-de-sac being cut off on the property line. This street provides, this little stub of deep water that's left provides access to a residence on the right and a residence on the left. Aside from that, you'll see that 20, then after that's cut off, it will be replaced with that 20-foot buffer I talked about with some landscaping and then the back of the building. This is the one location where the grade of the couple surrounding lots closest to the highway is closer to the proposed grade of the building, whereas as you go to the west and you go around the building on the west side, those lots sit significantly below the proposed pad elevation and proposed building.
I was trying to Google map it and kind of see above it. So there won't be, there isn't necessary to recreate a cul-de-sac there, is there?
No, from staff can probably answer that, but it's a short enough distance from fire code standpoint. It's just a short little stub. It's in essence, a little driveway that services a couple of homes. So it's short enough to be considered like a hammerhead. So Chris or Mr. Gilbert, if you'd like.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, those cul-de-sacs are already abandoned, so they're technically owned by the applicant. They're not city-owned anymore, and the southern one has been used by some of the adjacent neighbors, visible on the aerials for storage of vehicles, things like that. That'll, that activity will cease as well.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Question. I'm
Question, I'm looking at the visualization of the back of the building is what it looks like to me. What is that material? Is that just a corrugated metal, the white?
Like here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, these are illustrations, not final materials, but the intent is, yes, you'll see some block foundation in places. And then you'll see a combination of architectural metals and architectural stucco type metals, so a combination of metal materials.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
Just a question on that. So of course, that's facing the west with the sun coming in, I know. So we'll take in the consideration of reflection from the sun and bouncing back with metals and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, good question. We'll take that into account certainly in terms of final colors and stuff that are selected for the building, but that's a good, a good point. We'll certainly make note of that and ensure that's aesthetically pleasing and reduces that effect as much as possible.
All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? So yeah, please just make your way to the podium, state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name's Emiliano Torres. I'm a resident. This proposal makes a whole lot of sense to me, except for what I saw tonight. If you'll recall, traveling north out of town, if you're going to the Lowe's or to Anderson Chrysler or to the Nissan, I don't know where to turn my turn signal on. If I turn my turn signal on, or I should, people are going to think I'm going into the Nissan dealership or the Chrysler dealership. Or maybe I shouldn't put on my turn signal on and risk a rear end if I'm going into Lowe's. It appears to me that this is going to create the same kind of situation going south. You're going to have an entrance to a beautiful building, beautiful. I love it. I hate to say it, but it reminds me of the chaparral in San Bernardino. It's huge. It has all the services. I love it. But after seeing a fatality at that corner going into the Chrysler dealer last week, this scares me. And I'm hoping, hoping I'm wrong. I hope it's addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Yeah, one of the conditions that's in front of us is ensuring that all of the requirements from ADOT are are part of that. So that could be the the turn lane and all those types of things. That's a condition here. Good evening, welcome.
I'm Tricia Gagnon. I live on the west side of the property. With that being said, we talk about hypothetical ADOT approvals. Where are the approvals? And what happens if the applicant doesn't get the approvals? Then what? And when they purchase the property, those C one P Ds were tied to the property. They knew what the zoning was when they wrote the check. So say, well, we're going to hopefully get ADOT approval. Well, what happens? Then we come back and go, well, we didn't get ADOT approval. So now we're going to do this.
Yeah, so if the ADOT-
There's no assurance on that.
If ADOT approval doesn't come through, then they would have to go through another public process to go through. Senator Mr. Gilbert, if you want to elaborate on that a little bit.
Mr. Mayor, ADOT's comment regarding the rezoning application was they had no objection to the application to rezone the property and would address all the access issues during design review. So to us, that was an acknowledgement that the project would move forward. Just the details will be worked out later.
You know, and then people bring concerns and stuff like that about the metal corrugated, storage looking properties. Yay, I want that in my backyard in excess of three to four stories. Now we're talking about the subject, when it was initially zoned for target or whatever it was, now we're talking about a higher building. Now they want to abandon any assurances of the 50 foot setbacks. They want to abandon the walls. Everything else, they want to get rid of it all and act like they're doing us a favor by building this big, huge wall, big, huge building in our backyard, and we're not going to put one single light bulb behind it and not one single window outside the back of this huge building. And if there is, then what? We're going to call the police department? And they're talking about reflections coming off the west. I live off the west. They're like, well, we'll take that into consideration. And if they don't, then what? What's our recourse? You know, yes, we've got together with with the applicants and stuff like that, and they've said things. But they want to get rid of everything that was laid out to us and all the assurances that we were given initially with the C one P D that we were given to protect ourselves. They want to get rid of all of it. I I appreciate your consideration, but you know what, you guys, this is where we live. These are our homes. These are our backyard. And I'm going to tell you, these these view levels are distorted, hugely distorted from where my backyard is to what we're looking at, especially where we're at on that west side. Huge. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening.
Good council. My name's Dennis Bucolo. I live at lot 18, which would be at the end of the cul-de-sac on Deepwater. And I'm, as as residents, we don't oppose the rezoning. What we oppose is the site plan that's been presented to us. Okay? I was an attendance of one of the neighborhood meetings. And I went on your site to to look at the notes that came about from meeting number two. And any input from from any of the residents that were there, there's zero. Okay, so they really didn't address our concerns that we voiced at the time that they came out there. And I just have to defer back to 2008. All right? This legislative council with the planning and zoning, the developer and the residents work together to come up with a plan that would fit everybody in the community and which was originally an R one. Okay, so we're not we may be surrounded by commercial, but it's been R one since McCullough and Woods developed this town. So that's why in 97, when I built my home there, worst case scenario, I thought there would be more lots and more homes. But right here, it states that basically the tying the conditions and requirements to the property, not the project. So here we are, we're in 2024. You want to rezone it to C two, that's fine. But we already have conditions in place that are tied to the property that will ensure us some privacy and some, you know, and and our concerns. We're talking my property line, 20 foot off of my my property line will be the side of a building. I don't think any of you would like to pull out of your driveway and turn and look and see the back of a building 20 feet away from you. That's why it's essential for the 50 foot setback. They have 10 acres. Why is it they have to shove everything down into one corner and and not expand it out? When I asked at the planning and zoning meeting, why they couldn't move the building over 30 feet from the 20 foot setback that he wants on the south end of the property? I'm not sure exactly what he said, but with all due respect, it sounded like a word salad because like I said, they have 10 acres. All right? Moving that building over 30 feet and giving us at least a 50 foot setback on the west side for the people that are going to be almost level with the property is is, you know, something that I think you would, you need to consider. And so I just have to default back to what's already been put in place. Why has that changed? Can anybody answer?
Zoning does go with the land. That's how that that goes. So the current zoning is is that C one P D. But any any property owner has the ability to go through a public process, which this applicant is doing right now and ask for a change, and that's what they're doing today.
Okay, yeah, there are. I understand they're asking for a change in zoning, but the conditions were tied to the property, not the project. So whether it was a target back then or this mega store now, it should still have the same guidelines that were presented for the property owners at that time. It's our privacy. I don't think any of you who've lived there since as long as I have would like to come out and look and see a building 20 feet off your property line. I mean, really, especially when there's 10 acres. So I would like them to explain why they can't move the building over 30 feet and give us at least a 50 foot buffer on that side along with the fence, the block wall, which was one of the stipulations that we looked for. So I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
Good evening, Bonnie Toy. Hi, Mayor, Council. I was just curious as to the pictures that they showed and rendered. Which one of those pictures were actually the view from the homeowners that have to look up to the the buildings?
Yeah, there were several of them. Mr. Gilbert, I'm not sure if you can get that back on the screen, but there were several that were displayed. That's that's one of them there.
Uh, I didn't, let's see if I can manipulate this. Oh, I can. This was one of them here from, now, it's important to note that on the west side of the building, there's a 50 foot easement with the 35 foot proposed buffer there, there with the buffer they're proposing. So that's 85 feet on the west side. So the distance is far greater. And that's what you see here on this shot. And then, whoops. That one's, that one's at the very north end of the west side where the phase two will be. And then that's further down. And then that is on the south side at the end of, the north end of Deepwater Lane, where the cul-de-sac is today at the end of that shown driveway.
So that's what they're seeing from their back porch.
On the south side, on Deepwater, yes, that would be the one. This one is at the corner either, the applicant will have to note whether this is on the south side at the west end or the west end on the south, the west side on the south end of that. Not sure on this one. Because there's no, there's no landmark to to see. But here, this is clearly on the north end of the property. That's probably midwest side right there where you're looking 85 feet at the building. Even more because their backyards would be added in.
They don't get to see the mountains? That's so sad. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item?
Hello, hello, my name is Leonard Lacy, Council, Mayor. Welcome. I just got a question. How long did the city own that property before it was sold in 2004? 2023, 24? Because I propose that's cool, way cool to have. Just wondering why the city got rid of it or how long they had it for.
Yeah, so we had that property for a long time, ma'am. Ms. Carey, I'm not sure if you-
I don't, I don't recall the specific date, but the city received it from MCO, so maybe 60s, 70s, 80s, somewhere.
Gotcha. Why, why, why did you sell it?
We, any vacant land that we have that the city owns, any person can petition the city to do it and put it to auction. And that's how that occurred with this particular parcel. But this parcel was always intended to be used for a future economic development need. But this was, MCO Properties was a subsidiary of Mr. McCullough. And so when they used it for the reason it's called Kailua Ponds, it was the discharge ponds from the factory. And so this was a piece that was petitioned by an applicant. They were the successful bidder and it went through that public process.
Gotcha. Did it, did it get like cleaned up and stuff? Because there was a pit. Yeah, so compacted and everything, so it's safe, you know?
Yeah, ADQ has given it a clean bill.
Looked like the EDQ went into Holly and everything, but I didn't see anything there in 2023. So just wondering. I haven't seen anyone clean anything up there.
Oh, they've been doing it-
It's 2023.
Yeah.
Just reading what it said.
So ADQ has has given it a clean bill. Yeah, there's still some monitoring malls, but they're, it's it's a clean parcel. Yes. Yeah, thank you.
I'm Scott Stillman. I live at 900 Deepwater Lane, which is on the right side of that rendition you have there. I just don't understand why, you know, they they have the citizens' meeting notes, but on those notes, they never did address our concern as far as the 20 foot setback. They, it's not in, I've got the notes from their meetings and they, it's like they're avoiding that because they know that it's, it's, it's terrible, 20 foot. Why can't they move their building north another 30 feet? And, but they just want to ignore that. They've done that the whole time. So.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any additional questions? Or excuse me, any additional folks that would like to address the city council on this item? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion. Yeah, so Mr. Gilbert, you had mentioned that it's 85 feet on the west side on the on the other side where it is a 20 foot setback. What it, what is that equate to?
Well, they're proposing a 20 foot buffer on the south side of the property between the building facade and the neighboring property lines.
Okay.
The C two district minimum standard is six feet for a buffer. They're providing 20. On the west side, it's also six feet, but they're providing 35. And then there's that additional 50 foot easement, which is just dead land essentially, a natural buffer.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from members of the council?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Berlin?
Yeah, I do have a comment because I want to talk about the 50 foot setback because I look at at other commercial properties that that were zoned such as the what this was originally supposed to be, which was a department store. And the reason that you see those setbacks is because they take deliveries all night long at those types of businesses with the big roll up doors in the back and the loading docks in the back and that, and that's the reason for their 50 foot setbacks, and they don't mind giving those. And this piece of property, if they gave you the 50 foot setback, they would then have enough room to be able to move vehicles back and forth and take delivery of vehicles at the backside. I think a compromise that this developer has done is do away with the 50 foot setback, still give it 20 and a 30 and tell you that there won't be anything going on at the back of the building. So there won't be any windows, there won't be any driving, there won't be any driveways, there won't be any walkways, no doorways, so you'll have all that privacy. Where with a 50 foot setback, you may not have that privacy because they could take delivery of vehicles and have roll up doors and loading docks in the back back there because there'd be plenty of room. So I think what the the developer has done is really a great compromise for the the residents that live there, so they don't have to have those big rigs at the back of their building and right over the six foot wall.
Thank you, Councilmember Lane. That's actually a great point. And I believe a few of the citizens that came up to discuss about why don't, why don't you just move the building? I think that the applicant talked about the topography of the land and that it it fits best in that area. But it, yeah, you're right. It it stops from having that type of delivery traffic in the back as well. Any additional comments or questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Lane?
I move to adopt ordinance number 24 dash 1348 approving the general development plan and rezone of 2801 Highway 95 North, track 2277, block two, lot 19, and the vacated cul-de-sacs of Deepwater Drive and Cactus Run Lane from limited commercial district plan development to general commercial district plan development to accommodate a vehicle sales development and approving specific requested exceptions.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember for Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.5 is ordinance number 24 dash 1346 repealing Article 10 Airport Advisory Board Sections 11.08.970 through 11.08.1010 of City Code Chapter 11.8. Mr. Kane?
Mayor, Council, good evening. During the last two council meetings, we discussed the need to modernize and create a more efficient and effective communication venue for the community and stakeholders of the airport to engage. And last meeting, we introduced an ordinance to do that. And today we're here to adopt it if council so chooses.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Kane. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
As the Airport Advisory Board liaison, I just, I think Dr. Kane or Mr. General Kane for this. I think this is a great change, an update on what we're doing and I'm still willing to serve as a liaison in between at the airport while we're transitioning and such, going to the meetings and keeping the council up to date on changes. But I think it's a great update and I think it gives him access to some of the people that are on those, on that committee and some of those resources outside of the realm of limitations through council and open meeting and all that kind of stuff. You can work with them and utilize some of their experience at the operations level instead of the oversight level at our level. So. You can work with them and utilize some of their experience at the operations level instead of the oversight level at our level. So I support it.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
You brought up a great point. Is there a way that we can still continue to keep like a liaison as part of this code? I know, I see it's being struck out because I, I do like having a council member being active at all times with the airport.
Sure. Yeah. So the, uh, I mean, this is, uh, repealing the section of the code that has an airport advisory board. Uh, we can still have, um, you know, a council liaison or a council, um, person that is going to attend the, the new iteration of, of communication strategies. Uh, but you know, Mr. Kane, when he presented to us, there, there's several of them. So there's, you know, the quarterly, uh, airport talks, uh, there's the one-on-one with more, uh, expertise. You know, there's some folks that have, you know, very, very, um, strong expertise that he might have a one-on-one meeting or he might use as a sounding board for, for something along those lines. Um, so yeah, we can continue as we transition. And then if we find that that's not working, we can always, you know, make a change again. Uh, that makes it more formalized to make sure that the goal here has always been is how you engage the users of the airport with the expertise that they have, with the knowledge that they have to help support the operations that we have. So whatever it takes to do that, uh, this is what, over our last two council meetings, we've been discussing. That's what we think the answer is. And, and Mr. Kane has presented as, has been working successfully over the last 18 months that they haven't had airport advisory uh, board meetings. So I mean, I think Councilmember Dolan's, uh, offer to continue to liaison with Mr. Kane is, is a great offer. And, and if it's, if that works, great. And if not, then we come back and consider something different.
And realistically, it could be totally informal as well because I know Mr. Kane's, uh, door is always open. It sure was to me. And, um, I've gotten more information from him than I have ever before. So that, that was just a thought of, um, you know, as long as this door continues to stay open for each and every one of us, I, I'm, I'm pretty good with that. Or if we want to identify one liaison, but again, over the last 18 months, I don't think I've ever heard many reports other. So it's up to, I would say, it would be up to Councilmember Dolan on that point of what he recommends at this point.
My defense, I have updated this on every meeting in the last 18 months. We, we didn't have any, so. End update.
Yeah. Councilmember Lynn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To that end, um, what we, just something that comes to my mind is we could add that to the weekly reports that we get from the clerk's office that says what meetings are available. And then any of us that wants to go can go. And then it's posted if more than three council members show up.
And, and that is how we do it.
Are there any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to adopt ordinance number 24-1346 repealing Article X Airport Advisory Board Section 11 dot 08 dot 970 through 11 dot 08, 1 dot 1010 of City Code Chapter 11 dot 08.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan. We have a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.6 is ordinance number 241347 amending Lake Havasu City Code Section 3.20.040 schedule of fees and service charges to add and revise fees and service charges. Ms. Olson.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is our annual review of the fees and charges for Lake Havasu City. In the council communication, um, we have explained again, um, how this year we are not applying the consumer price index rate. We are actually, we had, we've already actually done an analysis of all of the fees and charges and the work that goes into the services provided behind those fees and charges. So this is kind of the, like every third year, we do this, what we might call a true up to kind of see how we measured against the CPI increases over the previous two years. We've had some increases and some decreases and that's normal. Um, typically we look at each of these services that we're providing associated with these fees and charges. And we determine if we're still doing it the same way. Have we, um, developed some efficiencies in how we provide that service? And we determine how much time and cost goes into, um, the total cost of, to the city for providing that, that service. Some of the services are market driven, so we do, we may calculate our costs, but we will also look at market rates. And if the council ordinance, the council's ordinance states that we will use market rates, we use those versus the, the total cost numbers that we've calculated. So we've done the market indication, market searches for those that are indicated using market rates. Some of the fees, um, are set by like such water and sewer is set by the rate study for the user charges. On the attachments, the ordinance itself indicates which of the fees have a change. We've indicated which fees were added, which were removed and some that were just revised. And so those are listed and they're listed by that service center number. So you can tie that to the actual list of the fees and charges that are attached. On the attachment, we have listed the 2024, the current fee, the 2025 proposed fee, and then we included a difference column so that you could more quickly at a glance, see which of the fees had changed, either increasing or decreasing or even staying the same. I want to thank Jamie Maisick, our senior accountant, who worked closely with the departments in pulling together the costs associated with the fees and putting together this schedule. The departments have representatives here this evening who are, will be able to answer any of your questions associated with their departments and their fees. And with that, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Yeah, Councilmember, or Mr. Knutson.
If I can just, um, piggyback off of Ms. Olson's presentation. Um, a lot of work, a lot of effort went into some of the, the formulas associated with the, uh, the, the fees and open for questions and, and consideration. There is one, a staff recommendation that's different than what's presented to, to council, and that would be on page 11 of 17. Where we talk about, um, sponsored swim over at the aquatic center. So it identifies, uh, that area that we, you know, that there isn't a, a existing fee. And then there's an increase and adjustment there too. The staff recommendation would maintain the fees, um, at 1,300 for commercial and 600 for the nonprofit. It's been a very, very successful event. We've had a lot of, uh, businesses that have come to the table to sponsor events and allow for some, uh, uh, free swim that, uh, that occurs at that time. So that'd be staff recommendation as presented with, with that, with that change there.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. Are there questions for members of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
Thank you, Mr. Knutson for that change. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, under the business license. So we're raising it. I know it's only $21, but if we're trying to invite businesses here and keep businesses, I'm wondering if we have to change those. It's going from 167 to 188 for new business and 120 to 134 for renewal. Can we just keep that the same?
Yeah, that's for our, our discussion now. So that's page four for my colleagues in council.
Yes. That's one of my recommendations.
It's actually was a question I had as well. Uh, what, what went up? Is that just CPI or what happens? Cause we just get a bill and then we just pay it and then we get a license in the mail.
The costs associated with processing those business licenses and the compliance of the business licensing, um, system goes into that number. So there's a lot of staff time associated with the process. So that's what's reflected here. We don't collect a hundred percent of the, the actual cost. We actually have the ordinance calls for on the renewals, we do a 50% cost recovery and for the business licenses, we do a 70% cost recovery. So there is some subsidizing of the actual costs already, but it is totally up to council. What you want to, what those, what you want those fees to be, and you can change the cost recovery rate. If you tell us what you want the fees to be, then we'll adjust the cost recovery rate for you.
So Councilmember Lynn, are you suggesting we keep the business licenses the same?
Yes. And so I'm going to finally address Mrs. Toy's concerns through the years on our drop-in swimming, um, for the open swim. So I, um, actually Ms. Toy and I did a little bit of work on this and we were looking at what bullheads rates are. And their open swim.
Councilmember, could you just get us to the page?
Yes, I'm sorry. Page 11.
Page 11?
Yep, on the very top.
Okay, thank you.
It's, starts with the open swim. So right now we have the different with the child, adult, the, um, punch passes. And so we were just comparing a little bit what Bullhead has. And Bullhead currently for their open swim under four is free. Their ages four to 17 is a dollar 50. Their adults are 250 and their senior and disabled are a dollar 50. We're currently at six, five. I think six and five. We just have, and I was just wondering if we could even cut that in half. And then we're kind of in the middle with what Bullhead is. I don't think that we're making a lot of money on those drop-ins. And I did ask, um, Mr. Knutson to send me what those numbers were, um, of how much ushers we're getting during the summer and the winter to see if it would be easier to lower the price in the summer or the winter. And he said for staff, it'd probably be easier just to cut it completely across the whole board. So I really would like to look at that and then maybe looking at our punch pass then to make it align a little bit more with the new prices instead of the $78 for the, um, punch pass to have it 50. I believe in Bullhead that theirs is like $20, but I'd have to look it up. So I just wonder if we could discuss what that looks like with those drop-in swim rates?
Sure. Yeah, no, I, I, uh, obviously we want people to enjoy our, uh, facilities for recreational opportunities. I could support, uh, that, uh, certainly. So you're saying that you'd wanted to go to, um, to $3 then for, uh, adults. Uh, the adult ages, let's see, make sure I'm.
Would it be easier just to do like rate across $3 for adults and children or do you, I, I, cause I don't know how many, I don't know if we got the breakdown of what the difference is adults and children. I don't, Mr. Knutson, you didn't send me that. Did you? You just gave me the drop-in rate.
Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, um, yeah, so that, uh, the figures that was passed along, um, are for adult, kids, senior, three and under, uh, drop-in and punch pass. That's, that's total that was provided, um, for the rest of the council and for the community. So we're looking at, uh, um, over a 12-month timeframe, you're looking at about 28,000, um, a little over 28,000 participants that participate at our aquatic center. That's a lot of people, which is very, very cool. And that generates, uh, about 60, uh, a little over 60, about $63,000 in, in, in revenue that represents.
Thank you. Yeah. I mean, operationally, I, I don't run a pool, but I do run things that charge money. And so I, I, one flat fee of $3 would seem easily operational, but maybe Ms. Vera can, can weigh in on what, uh, that might be from an operational perspective.
And I do have a solution for that difference in price. I have, I had a different fee in here.
Uh, Mayor, City Council, thank you guys for having me up here. Um, so yeah, when we talk about the operations for our pool, we're looking at staffing, we're looking at electricity, water, chemicals, lifeguards, all of that, right? So we have to look at it holistically. Our lifeguards that are on deck, they have to be, uh, certified. Um, our staffing, our full-time staff are on there as well. Now, I think that's fantastic that you brought up Bullhead. We did some of our benchmarking. We were looking specifically at our sponsored swims. And it seems because we can't do like-for-like, they don't have an indoor aquatic center. Their pool doesn't hold up to 600 people. So there's just really, when we look at it that way and we kind of have those figures out, we'd really have to figure out where we can make certain cuts. And at the end of the day, my job for our department is to be fiscally responsible. So I want to make sure that we're not coming in in the red too far. Obviously we are a, a service and we want to offer that with our free swims, our sponsored swims, our classes, our aquatics aerobics, all that. But I really have to think of it like longevity and making sure that we can maintain the facility and bringing in revenue assist with us doing that.
Yeah, perfect. So if we were to, uh, make the decision to, uh, have the open swim be $3, would you prefer one rate for, um, children and adults or it looks like seniors have, have a discount in our current fee schedule?
Yeah.
Of a dollar. Would you just prefer it be, uh, one, one rate or have two?
I would, I would do two separate rates. So 17 and under, if you just want to kind of fold all the youth in, we can do that. And then adults, we should be charging a little bit more.
Yeah, I'd be, I would be okay. I would be okay with maybe even just the $3 for the children and seniors. And the $6 charge doesn't bother me too much with the adults.
So if you look under, and I'm not sure if it's in this fee schedule or in the one I have that we filled out. But when we do for youth, school and Special Olympics, we charge $4 for those participants.
And maybe we want to look at maybe changing that to, yeah, to $3. And then I think that we would have to adjust that punch pass. Would you have to do a children's punch pass and adult punch pass then differently? Or would you still do it the same? Cause if you're doing 20 at, let's see.
At $60 at $3.
Yeah. So you would have to lower it to 60.
So conceptually does council, uh, is council on board with, with this?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
How are we as far as capacity in the summer months? Are we at full capacity on these open swim days?
So we do not take on full capacity just for the safety factor. We will have 14 guards when we do our sponsored swims. And we know we're going to have a large number of participants and swimmers. We try to cap it at 400. That'll just, it, we want to make sure that we're, we're emphasizing the safety and making sure that we're make, you know, we, we want to make sure anybody there is having a good time. Obviously we, we want to give people the opportunity, but we have to make sure people are safe. So that's why we're kind of looking at that.
So 400 is like our limit if we do, not on the, the sponsored open swims, but just on a regular.
Yeah, on a regular basis.
400 all the time on, during the summer.
No, no. So, um, this past weekend, we were looking at 125 people.
I definitely think, you know, with the, the, the motivation behind this was also to increase for the summer for kids that are off in school. And maybe it's something we don't have to do full year. Maybe we could have a summer, three-month summer plan where, you know, so we're dropping it at two bucks, but you know, there's going to be more kids swimming. So, you know, revenue wise, it may get better for us and we're, but we're making it easier for the parents and the kids during those summer months. So is that something we can maybe also get some information on by the next meeting?
Well, I, I don't, at this point, I don't even think we would need to do that. Before I came into this meeting, I benchmarked the only like-for-like facility that we have in the state of Arizona is in Tempe. Currently Tempe charges $4 for their participants, 17 and under to participate. Um, I think that is a fantastic idea. Um, if we did maybe a summer rate and we looked at reducing the price for the summer. Um, at the end of the day, again, like I said, we have to be fiscally responsible. I want to make sure that we're still be able to operate. Um, you know, above the standard at this point, I think Lake Havasu City and our aquatic center sets the standard. And I want to make sure we're keeping and emphasizing that.
Yeah, I'd like to maybe see if we could look at the summer specific because I think that was the main need was the summer crowd. And the rest of the year, it seems to be working pretty well, but like I said, maybe we can definitely look at the summer.
And if we looked at doing that for a couple of weekends out of the summer that's coming up, that'll give us a gauge so we can figure out how much staffing we really need to look at. Cause again, we just want to make sure that we're being safe. And right now on deck, we'll have about 14 lifeguards rotate. And of course we have our two cashiers at the front desk when people are coming to check in and pay.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Moses?
If I can just make a comment, uh, I love kind of your, your understanding of your business kind of deal. I, I just, I really appreciate how much you're, uh, you're on top of this. Um, I would be, uh, supportive of a summer rate type deal. I wasn't really in supportive of this to begin with, but I think that's a, that's a great idea, Jim. Um, just to keep our kids busy during, uh, during the summer months when school's out. Um, and then to touch on the business, um, the business licensing, uh, fees, I think I'm okay with the, uh, increases. I think, uh, she, she pointed out that we're already subsidizing those at 50% rate or, or whatever. Um, I don't think we need to subsidize those any further. I'm a big supporter of pay for what you use and, and as a business person, I, that is a cost and, and I, I do so accordingly, you know, with, with my business. So I, I don't want to subsidize those anymore. Um, and, uh, look forward to the summer rates if, if we can explore something like that.
Councilmember Campbell?
Mayor? Um, I believe Michelle Lynn has done a lot of homework. She's went out, she researched other cities, other communities. She spoke with municipal, you know, community members. And, um, I, I'm hearing that she wanted to drop these all year long to help. And I believe in the summertime, we probably have more kids going than in the wintertime. So I would like to go with Michelle Lynn's, uh, councilwoman, councilwoman's Lynn's, um, direction on this because I, I trust in her, uh, level of due diligence, due diligence, and I appreciate that. And actually the fight for Mrs. Toy out there. She's listening to her constituents on a regular basis. As for business license, I, I don't see for the raise on that. Um, it, tit for tat realistically, because I know how many businesses are struggling right now with just utility rates. And I'm sure the utility rates at the aquatics that are probably through the roof. And I think we need to be very mindful of what you're talking about as well. So anyway, we can help you out. Can, can I circle back to say what the heck happened with the page number, um, five? For all the business owners, I mean, all the contractors out there trying to build homes and trying to. and trying to keep housing prices down, this seems like the biggest jump. We have a three, a three-quarter inch flat free meter size was twenty-one eighty-four, going up to forty, almost five thousand dollars? A jump of over a hundred percent for a three-quarter inch meter for a residential home? I find that extremely absorbent. Am I reading that right? I'm on page five.
Page five under code S-131.
Yeah.
So flat fee by meter size talks about three-quarter inch going from its current rate to the proposed rate of forty-nine, forty-six for a twenty-seven dollar increase.
Yeah, and twenty-three hundred is our set study rate, but we're up to fifty-one ninety-eight for a one-inch meter. That's a two thousand eight, over a hundred percent increase. Can somebody explain why we really stuck it to the contractors?
I, I don't think that's how it is, Councilmember Campbell, but.
You know.
Is that a, Mr. Foggan question or Ms. Olson?
It is huge.
Public Works can, can certainly provide more detail. But in determining the actual cost, we, we, in the process, realized that there were much of the costs not being captured for the three-quarter, for these, these meters. And so that is why it's going up so much. It's because we've been charging less than what our costs were unknowingly as far as capturing all of the costs associated with the meters.
Like, Mr. Foggan?
Yeah.
Mayor, Council, actually, Ms. Olson just covered it. We, we've actually been undercharging for meter installation. And so what we were asked to do as part of this is just do an actual cost to cover the expenses. And so that was what was presented.
So then what is that expense? So there's like a meter or is it time and labor to it?
Yeah, it's the combination of meter costs and setting just the cost of equipment and setting the meter.
Well, Mayor, I, I think on average, a normal home permit alone is, gosh, I'm going to pull it out of my brain here, which is scary, like about sixty-eight hundred dollars. So it's really, really, there are so many fees to building a house. The city actually gets a ton of money for every build that we get. I mean, I just built a little tiny house and it's just a mind-blowing to see all the permit fees, this fee, the this fee. And we're over here going, oh, we're going to try and do everything we can to keep housing prices down. And boom, we're just going to raise it a hundred and ten percent. So I find this very concerning to me. So I don't know, it looks like we're just kind of having a discussion at this point and we're going to send this back to the staff for reevaluation. But I, I would love to hear what the rest of the council members think about these a hundred and ten, over a hundred percent increases on meters after we just did a massive water rate increase for a lot of people and utilities.
Well, at the end of the day, just devil's advocate on this, is either we all collectively are paying for you to build your, your small little house you just did, or you're paying to do the house that you built. So that's really what it is. I mean, the cost of the meters and the labor and what it is to operate the, the, the operation here is, is that. And so they're doing a cost recovery analysis based on what the cost is. So are, are we going to collectively across all ratepayers help subsidize the build of your home? Or is the homeowner going to pay for the cost of, of their home? Again, we can have the conversation as a council, what do we want to do? But that's, that's what it is. The costs aren't changing based on, on who's building it. That's what the cost is to deliver it. And, you know, it's, it's council policy to bring this forward. You, you know, this is my, my least favorite discussion to have. I, I do not like this, this conversation on the rate fees. I generally vote no on it because of, of, you know, it's, it's complex and there's lots of pieces to this. But yeah, there's significant increases. So from a council perspective, do we want to feather those increases in to eventually get a full cost recovery out of that? Do we want to charge what staff is proposing on this item? And that's the discussion we're having right now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
On that item, can you, how long have we been under that? I mean, when did we, for how long have we been losing money because we're not getting?
We're as far back as we could tell on the records that we had in finance. And I believe in Public Works, we, we don't believe the costs were all being captured until this year.
When you come back to us, could you give us a little bit more information on that? Because I, I think I'd like a little bit more clarification exactly what that looks like.
Yeah, what specifically changed?
Please.
Yeah, Mr. Knudsen?
Councilmember Lynn, we can, what we can do is come back with like a breakdown on what that looks like. What's the cost of the actual meter itself? Was the, and, and then the other costs associated with the placement of that here. And we'll, we can spell all that out and, and show it to council for consideration.
Any other questions or comments from members of the council? Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it's, I hate having this conversation as well, but usually you and I disagree when it comes to this stuff. I look at it from a point of view that there are certain things the municipality has, has to pay for. We have to pay for our law enforcement. We have to pay for our fire. We have to pay for our parks. We had, there's certain things we have to pay for. We have to maintain our roads. Then we have our enterprise funds, our sewer, our, our water, those different things that we have to pay for. But then there's things that people want to do in the city. And when they want to do those things, they have to pay for it. So when it comes to the business license, if you want to have a business, you have to pay for the license. As we saw here, we're subsidizing business licenses already. So when we say we're subsidizing, that means that the rest of the taxpayers are picking up the expense for those businesses that aren't paying what it truly costs to process all that paperwork. When it comes to these fees, like on these meters, there's a, a cost. We buy those meters and then we sell them back to the people so that they can put them in their houses. And if, if they don't pay for them, the rest of the taxpayers are paying it. And you kind of alluded to that, Mayor, when you said either the taxpayers are helping you build your house or you're building your house. And so as much as I hate raising fees, the cost of things go up. So every year, we have to do this as fees go up. When it comes to parks and rec and the, the lowering of fees at the aquatic center. First off, Ms. Vera, you're doing an outstanding job over there. You're new to your position and you have jumped in with both feet. And you are open to every and all suggestion we have to lower fees to the public. I'm a, a big believer that that's one of the things that we as citizens can subsidize, which is children enjoying our aquatic center and our pool. It's one of the reasons I want to have another pool built because we need a swimming pool for our swim meet type of people. So I have no problem lowering fees for that. I would be interested, Councilmember Lynn said she has an idea for funding. Because my concern right now is if we lower the fees, that money now comes out of the Parks and Rec's budget. So where do we put the money and get the money in order to subsidize that? Because it wouldn't be fair to now take money away from Parks and Rec, but double the amount of people that are going there. So there has to be a, some sort of an alternative plan. The other part was, I, I'm hearing, going back and forth at, well, we can bring this back, we can bring that back. I was under the impression that we were adopting this tonight or we were not adopting this tonight. So I'm just kind of curious where we're headed on that as well. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Councilmember Lane. Yeah, so tonight is an introduction. So we would introduce this, this ordinance with suggested changes. I think staff is listening intently. And then in our next meeting, it will be final adoption, where we'll have the, the items with the changes that we discussed this evening, if that's the consensus of the council for final adoption to go forward. Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
I don't want to brag, but I keep up on current events. I don't know if anybody else has noticed, in the last few years, things are a little bit different in the economy. Things have changed quite a bit. So I'm not a bit surprised that a meter that cost twenty-five hundred dollars three years ago is forty-five hundred dollars now. I think, you know, we definitely live in that world where we all see that price shock a lot. And like I said, I'm, you know, we also got to trust our staff. We ask them to do this every three years, break down, tell us what it is. So we find things like this, so we're not losing money. And like I said, maybe a couple of years ago, this made sense. But now with the way inflation is, it's definitely something we need to look at and see. And if it does come down to, you know, I don't think we as the citizens should subsidize somebody else's house. And it's not even a shot at the contractor. The contractor is going to pass it on to the homeowner. But, you know, we always say that, like people, you know, they move in, they should pay their fees and, you know, the impact fees and such. And if this is what it costs for a meter, it's what it costs for a meter for a house. So I think we just also need to keep that in mind, you know? It's a little different than it was three or four years ago, last time we did this evaluation. So this is why we have it and we may not like some of the numbers. But, you know, it's kind of what we're supposed to do. So just my thoughts.
Mayor, unless the meter change, because an average meter is well under five hundred dollars to buy that. And I'm saying that's a high-dollar meter. So I'm just.
It's my business. We, we've been buying.
Well, because you're doing bigger.
Yes.
Doing a lot bigger than a three-quarter inch residential. Okay, so what I'm trying to say here is, are we going to a smart meter technology which would take that particular meter up over three hundred percent? And then if that's the case, then I can justify it if we're changing the technology, if we're using an outdated, older style meter. But I know that the direction of the city is to go with the smart meter technology. Can anybody give me that answer?
Well, it's coming to you next meeting. I think Mr. Knudsen already said that we'll have a full analysis of what those meter prices are with the cost of the meter and then the ancillary costs that make up what this is for our final consideration when we're, when, when and if we want to adopt this ordinance. So that'll be coming forth, yes. Councilmember Cole?
I know there's a lot of discussion on all the fees that we've raised. But Jill, congratulations you and your staff for finding ways where we could reduce costs in areas that we could. So there is a lot of that in these proposed fees. And I just want to give you recognition for that. We're not just only raising fees. You have found areas where we can lower the costs. So thank you and your staff for being diligent in that area.
Thank you, and, and the departments get a lot of credit for that.
Councilmember Lynn?
If you can go to page ten. So this might be a way that we can make some extra money at the Parks and Rec Department down there. We currently, we rent out, can I have the Parks and Rec Director come up? Page ten. I don't, I don't see it on here, but we hold like weddings and different things down there, correct? I don't know which one it would be under for services. Is it, um, the, I'm not sure which one, is it community center events?
It would be if it.
Or is it special event program?
No, that, that's something completely different.
I'm just wondering where that is.
Putting on, yeah, um, community center events, it should be. That's on the facility use schedule. Let me go grab that real quick.
Thank you.
All right, hit me.
Okay, so we, we do, we do weddings and we do the conciertas. We do a bunch of the ones down there. And that's where, I believe that's where we have our beverage sales, our alcohol beverage sales. So I have a restaurant. My cost of alcohol will never go down. It's always going to go up. And I see we went, we went down here, not a lot, a quarter. But I don't see any reason, you can't raise these, these different liquor prices for your canned beer or your wine. You can raise them all a dollar. That's going to make up difference right there on your events. So I don't know what the thoughts are there, the council on it. But instead of going down on alcohol and we could maybe offset a little bit of that on the swimming for the kids.
Councilwoman Lynn, I think that's a great idea. However, I do have to add, our community center has turned into almost more of an event space than a community center. Some of the things that we're looking at specifically, February twenty-twenty-six, because that's when the schedule kind of stops. We're hoping to add more activities inside the community center that wouldn't necessarily be utilized for venue space, but more so Parks and Recreation-operated programs, activities, basketball programs, arts classes, things of that nature that are going on in there, specifically evenings and weekends. But for the times that we aren't utilizing that space, that's something that we can definitely consider. I just don't know at this time if it would be able to help offset some of those costs. Maybe for the next year and a half?
It's a little bit, it's a little bit. Because I don't go down to some of those events, like when we have the concerts in there, do we serve alcohol during that time?
They do, yes.
Okay, so there's times that, I don't know how many people are drinking down there. I don't know which are.
I'm sure quite a bit. I, I think, I think that's probably one of the benefits that people like about the concerts is because there's alcohol served in there.
We can raise it, we can raise a beer a dollar.
Some of these, just from a historical perspective, how we even got to the, this area and why they're going down is the, operationally, the staff doesn't like quarters. And so quarters make it hard to get change runs and those types of things. I was one of the champions to increase it because like, like you, Councilmember Lynn, I, I'm in that business. And so I don't disagree that we can increase all those for a dollar. When you go to a venue, any venue, you pay double the cost you'd pay anywhere else for, for anything. So I think a dollar to increase the beverage sales. You know, when it comes to offsetting the costs, you know, one of the things that we do is, as value as a community is our youth and our, our recreation programs. That's why people live in Lake Havasu. So beyond all of the fees that we're talking about here, our residents are paying property taxes if they own property. They're also paying sales tax when they purchase things and items throughout our community. So to cover the sixty-three thousand dollars that Mr. Knudsen had mentioned, that's the total. We're just talking about a percentage that's called thirty thousand because we'd be reducing the fees in half. We can subsidize that with the general fund, just knowing that we're doing that. So we can keep the Parks and Rec budget at its current funding levels until we readdress it in our next budget discussions. But subsidize that with general fund dollars, which are coming in from general sales or general receipts that our residents are paying, and visitors for that matter, that are using sales tax. So I, I think this is a doable, a doable thing, if that's the will of the council. Any additional comments before we open the public hearing? All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item?
It's Bonnie Toy. I just want to say thank you.
Please.
Robert Fisher, a resident here in Havasu. Some of your discussions about the business license fees, the water meter fees and so forth are a bit disingenuous. I remember several months ago, in the discussions about this Victoria Gardens development out by the airport, that the city agreed to spend over a million dollars for infrastructure to support that development. And the developers could have just as well been charged for all of that to hook up to the city. And, and you didn't do it. You took our taxpayer money to help those people build that house, build that, those, that development. And likewise, on a business license, you should be paying businesses to come here because the tax revenue, once they get going, is going to more than offset any of the costs of your bureaucracy to look at their application and decide whether or not you like it. So I think you're, you're being disingenuous there in, in inhibiting some of the things that would help with businesses coming in here. And as far as the cost of a water meter, I thought that was outrageous, as Councilwoman mentioned. There, there again, you ought to be paying people to put their meters in because they're going to pay the water bill and the taxes on that property for the next hundred years, probably. So it's a benefit to the city to have those things installed and in service because you're going to get a continuous revenue stream off of it rather than the initial small investment of having to dig a hole in the ground and put a piece of pipe in it. So I think some of your discussions on these fee increases are counterproductive. It was only a few months ago that this council gave away a big ton of money to a bunch of charities because we had extra tax money that we could fritter away to a bunch of charities that most of us taxpayers wouldn't really necessarily want to, didn't donate to. If we wanted to donate to a charity, we could have done it ourselves. So I think you're being a little bit disingenuous with some of these discussions. And you could do a better, a better, uh, business-friendly environment and a home-building environment without having some of these burdensome costs and fees being foisted off on a homeowner trying to build one little house. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher, so you, you mentioned a couple of things I can't just leave hanging there. So we didn't just donate money to donate to charities. That was through ARPA funding. It was one of the requirements of, of the federal grant dollars that came that way on how the, the pie was to be divided. But yes, the council did make that adjustment. And Mr. Councilmember Lane had mentioned our enterprise fund. So when it comes to water, water is not paid by the taxpayers. It's an enterprise fund that, that the ratepayers are paying for it. So either you pay for your pump or I help pay for your pump with, with my other citizens within this community. So that's what we're talking about. So we, we can have, you know, separate discussion offline if you want to, to get into the details of some of those things. But it, it's not, it's not a benefit, we're not getting revenue from the water. Water's a nonprofit system. We charge the ratepayers what it costs to deliver the water service to them.
Well, I still get a tax bill for the property.
You do, yes. And that's, that's what we're talking about, offsetting some of the aquatic.
Federal grant monies, that's still tax money, taxpayers' money that was paid in through taxes and then given away.
And I don't disagree, I, I understand, but I just need to make sure that.
I don't like somebody deciding for me what I'm going to donate to for a charity.
I can appreciate your comments, absolutely, yes.
Mayor and Council, Joan De Zero. I agree with you. I just had a house built here in town. And when it was building it, it was during the time when ra, when the wood for rafters and things went through the roof, no pun intended. And I was waiting for it to come back down, but I fully expected I had to do that. Same thing happens with whatever the meters are, whatever this stuff goes into the house. As a citizen of the city, I expected I was going to have to pay. As a citizen of the city, I expected I was going to have to pay for that. I didn't expect my neighbors to have to pay so that I could build my home. So I'm comfortable with whatever you guys come up with on the rates, and I appreciate that you're willing to take a look at giving the kids a break with swimming. Learning to swim is so important, especially when you live next to a lake. And I think this will encourage more people to get out and learn how to swim and to enjoy our lake a little bit more as they grow up. So I appreciate your looking at those items.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the City Council on this item?
Council, Mayor, welcome. I have a question on water, um, like a water board. What size does the city have to be? Or does the board council have to decide when to get a water board established? Since we've been losing money on water meters, um, tonight you showed that, and the meters here, every 10 years, you need a water meter system to change or so you can make more money because the waters turn the meter and it stops, slows down after 10 years. So you lose money over 10 years. So you have to have a water exchange program. But there's serious things with water, sewer, storm drains that need to be done, and those taxpayer money all goes together. And in some of the bigger towns, they have a water board that's just like you guys, but they go over just water, sewers, storm drains, where that money is supposed to be going and where those taxes are supposed to be headed. But, um, it'd make your life easier if you had a water board because then they could bring everything to you, what you need. Because if you don't have water, you don't have fire, you don't have a town. And we lost our rainy well. You know, we have infrastructure issues that we're working on in the city. I worked for the city for five years for the Water Department, Operations Treatment Plant, Special Projects Wreath on the bridge. It was cool. But it would make things a lot easier if everybody understood what water is and water quality reports. Because we have a dead end main going to the Riviera. We've got a dead end main going up the hill to the foothills. We need to loop everything together or we're going to have serious issues with our trihalomethanes and any other issues that we have since we use chlorine and not ammonia to get longer distance. But that's all I have to say.
Perfect, yeah. We're on a fee schedule right now. Thank you. Yeah. Would anyone else like to address the City Council on this item? All right, seeing that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to, to council. So just recap what I've, I've heard so far.
Mr. Mayor, can I just say one more thing? Just, I want, because I want to ask Jill, I know you were talking about the recovery cost for business license. So I just looked up Bullhead has their business license for $60 and Kingman has theirs for 100. So would the recovery be different for them than for us? Like, I'm just trying to figure out what the difference is.
It very well could be. I don't know that they had, I don't know what their cost recovery rates are for their fees or how they calculate their costs.
So what we talked about tonight, we are here to consider introduction of this ordinance. We can obviously make some changes and suggestions to the, the team about what it is that we'd like to see as a council for the final introduction. So this is obviously first read. We'll have a final introduction in a subsequent meeting. Some of the comments I've heard from members of the council are to reduce the drop in aquatic rates along with the punch cards in, in half. And staff recommendation is to keep the sponsored swim rates the same. So at $1,300 for commercial, $600 for nonprofit. There's been some discussion on business licenses and, and looking at that. And then the water meters, which we'll have some additional data for our consideration in our packet for our next meeting, are the items I've heard from members of the council.
And the liquor.
Oh, and the, and moving, yeah, moving the liquor up a dollar. Yes, thank you. I'm moving the liquor up a dollar. Is it, did I miss anything on, on that recap? So if we're good with, with those things, again, this is just introductions. We'll introduce it. If anyone has any pain points on any additional items or any of the items that we're going to have staff look at again, we can address that during our next meeting when we do final adoption. With that, then I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
I move to introduce ordinance number 24-1347, amending Lake Havasu City Code, Section 3.20.040.
Second. Ms. Gary is at work for what we've talked about this evening?
Yes, I mean, I understand your recap, and that's perfect. The introduction just introduces it just as it's written. So if they would just add to that with the recap as stated by the mayor, then it clarifies that you're meaning for us to change it or bring back further information.
I'd like to amend my motion to include all the great stuff that Mayor Sheehy said that we're going to look at for the next meeting.
And I will second that.
Okay, so we, we have a motion from Councilmember Dolan. We have a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item is item 7.7, Resolution Number 24-3785, approving the 2024 update to the 2022 wastewater master plan. Mr. Kellit?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy to present this item to all of you. Just as way of background, we're looking at our 2022 water master plan as it was put together with the inclusion of a 2024 update, which we will cover during the presentation. But first, I'd like to start with, what is a wastewater master plan? And by way of analogy, let's imagine we've all decided we're going to go see Mount Everest. We're going to take a trip, right? And what are we going to do? We're going to, we're going to make a plan, right? We know now where we're going. We're going to make a plan. We're going to look at our routes. Are we going to go through Denver? Are we going to go up through the middle of Utah? What are we going to do? Which path are we going to take? And then where are our stops? This is the idea behind a wastewater master plan. It, it's a roadmap. We know we want to go somewhere, and how are we going to get there? Well, what did our plan do? Our plan goes through and it's doing a system review. It's looking at all the pieces that we have, doing a performance analysis. How do these things perform? How do they rate versus other systems? How should they be looking? And then you start identifying needs. What are the demands of your system? What needs prioritization? And as you're putting it together and trying to get that final bow on it, you're, you're looking at a planning horizon. You're going to say, okay, over the next X number of years, in this particular case, we look to the year 2040. That's a planning horizon with the general understanding that you do these sort of wastewater master plans, any master plan within the utilities industry about every five to seven years. So you, you're looking out for a good amount of time to make sure you're doing it. We did partner with Jacobs on an effort in 2022 and then an update in 2024. And at this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. Mark Elliott with Jacobs, over 40 years of consulting in the water wastewater industries, 15 years specifically working with Lake Havasu City. So you might say he knows a thing or two because he's seen a thing or two. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Mark and let him give you the technical aspect. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and Council, it's a pleasure to present today this important project. In 2022, we completed a comprehensive wastewater master plan for the city. Some background, a couple of schematics here. On the left shows the entire sewer collection system for the city, including three wastewater treatment plants. On the right is a schematic that shows your three wastewater treatment plants. And in purple is your reclaimed water system. And one thing unique about the city is you have all three of your plants interconnected. A few metrics, your wastewater collection system incorporates 350 miles of sewer main. Also unique about the city because of the topography is your staff has to manage and operate 49 lift stations. That's very unique in sewer systems of this size. You operate three wastewater treatment plants, two in the city area and one in the north. The top line shows treatment plant capacity for each of the facilities. Today, you have over eight MGD of capacity, and you're operating at about 50%. Why a 24 update? Partly because, as you're aware, you've seen a lot of growth and increased development activity. And it gave us an opportunity to review your current five-year and 10-year capital plan. The graph that you're looking at is an update of the population forecast for the city. On the X axis is time through our Horizon Year 2040, and on the left is the city population. If you look closely, there's an orange line that shows 0.7% growth. That's what we assumed in 2022. That was from the MPO forecast, so we had some consistency in projections. Interestingly, in this update, we took a look, and not surprising, we have seen an uptick in growth. And the line above there is showing about 1%. So we have seen a little bit increase. So we looked at what's the impact of capacity. This graph, same Horizon Year on the X axis to 2040. On the left, we show million gallons a day of treatment plant capacity. As I mentioned, you currently operate over eight. The horizontal line that shows 75%, that's a critical threshold where the city would be required to do a design, preliminary design and develop a revenue plan to expand the facilities. We also plot both the 0.7 MPO growth as well as the 1%. And as you can see to the right, we are very well under that 75% at 2040. So that's the good news for the city. We have treatment plant capacity. So the master plan focused on reliability, efficiencies, replacement of facilities. This is just a, a list of some of the projects we work collaboratively with your wastewater team to develop as part of the master plan. And having done this for 15 years, I will say it's a pleasure working for your operations, folks. They engage, um, and, and they're the ones really behind this plan and, and the CIP. And with that, I appreciate, appreciate turning it over to your superintendent Thelak to highlight some of the success stories.
Mayor and City Council. So there are several projects that I would like to show you today with good pictures. And those are the projects we completed last two years. And the priority of doing these projects we got from the master plan. And then we are also doing about 11 projects right now at various stages. So this is the, the first project, which is changing our auto control system from chemical to biological. There are several advantages of using biological system because first it is safe and it's also cost effective, and it is friendly with environment because all those chemicals is going back to the environment. And additional advantage is that we use a lot of portable water in the chemical system. And with the biological system, we can use the reclaimed water. So that way we can save millions of gallons of water as well as the cost related to the generating soft water. And these are the towers, just go back one more time. These are the towers that, the unique thing about this project is that the planning as well as the installation of this system was done by wastewater personnel. By doing this, we didn't have to hire engineers or contractors. Saved city tons of money. The second project is the flow equalization basin. We call FUB, the Island Treatment Plant. The idea of having this big concrete tank is to store the incoming wastewater from either lift station or through gravity. That way we can feed the treatment plant and its process in a constant flow rate instead of going up and down. That tremendously make our life easier. Also, it's much easier to achieve the compliance parameters. The next project is recondition and rebuild of the belt filter press. I came to the council some time ago and we talk about the sludge cake. This is, is that, that project. And this press was not being rehabbed for a long time since the beginning of the, the treatment plant, which was about 17, 18 years. And it's, uh, it's completed now. It's working very well. Then the additional filter at the Island Treatment Plant, we had an old filter, which was probably since the beginning of that plant, which is quite old. It was called a sand filter, but you know, there are problems with that filter. The structure is weakened and needs repairs. Only way we can do the repairs is having another filter. So city purchased this filter for a while ago. However, due to some problems and flow capacities, we were not able to get it working for about five years. But last year, we were able to get it working. Now we are in the stage of planning to rehab the sand filter, which is the old filter, so we have redundancy. This is chip drive lift station upgrade. We have a program in our CIP list for upgrading lift stations. You saw there, we have a lot of lift stations, and some of them are quite old and they, they need to work on. And in this case, we did actually rehab the wet well and piping, as well as we completely changed the pumps, electrical system, generator and SCADA or communication equipment. This is the last project I'm going to bring up. This is the Vedos Well Expansion Project. Those of you know about the North Treatment Plant, we have a procedure that we can inject the water to the ground. So those are called Vedos Injection Wells. And we've been using existing wells for many years, especially in the winter because we have a difficult time disposing the effluent due to the fact that irrigation is much reduced during the winter months. So we have a lot of excess water. And our wells are old. Their efficiency is not that high. So we try to rehab these wells. Some of them are successful, but others are not. So we need new wells until we come up with other ways of disposing effluent. So we were able to build two wells and they will be ready for coming winter. So like I said, we get the lead and the priorities from our master plan. And these are some of the projects we have completed, but there are a lot of projects going on. Hopefully I can bring in the future those projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fernando.
And with that, we'll be happy to take any questions on the plan or any part of the presentation at this point.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Kellit. Are there any questions from members of the council? Councilmember Lynn?
Mr. Mayor, I, I think I just need clarification. So I have, I asked for a paper copy of it. So this is the 2022 wastewater master plan. And we're approving the update with what he presented, the update. I'm, what is, what is changing?
The population projections and the use projection over that period of time. So in 2022, we had a population projection that led to a use and capacity projection.
Okay.
Since we had the opportunity to look at it again over the last couple of years, noticed that instead of a 0.7 growth, we were following a 1% growth, we updated the rest of the report to reflect that new growth parameter, saying, okay, are we still okay at our planning horizon of 2040? And it turns out we are. And so that's where the update information is. It's really that population and then projection of need is what the update is. A lot of the fundamentals in there, what the plant looks like, a lot of the identified projects, those have stayed the same because what we saw in 2022, we still need in 2024. But now we're also incorporating this, this vast change in population that was, you know, there wasn't accounting for some population growth. We saw more, and now we know our plan still fits that as well.
So are those changes in this right?
About the report.
So this is different than the one that was given to us in 2022?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I just want to thank the staff for bringing this to, bringing this to us. I really appreciate it. I reviewed it back in 2022, had some questions. You guys did some updates on it. I really appreciate it. This is going to be my holy Bible for a while. I appreciate it. And it gave me some closure on some of my concerns. Thank you.
Excellent. Any additional questions from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any. any additional discussion or possible motion? Hey, councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Please.
I move to adopt resolution number 24-3785 approving the 2024 update to the 2022 wastewater master plan.
Second.
We have a motion from councilmember Koch. We have a second from councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item is item 7.8, Agreement for Professional Services for the Programming, Design, CMAR Management and Construction Management of the Second Bridge to NV5 of Arizona. Good evening, Mr. Wolf.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight for the Second Bridge Design Award. I might add, starting out, our consultant with NV5 is here, Kevin Murphy, in case we have any questions towards the end. As you might all remember, we've recently approved, the councils recently approved the Second Bridge Feasibility Study, which had study highlights such as evacuation and emergency island and mainland access, roadway network connections, utility crossing redundancy. We minimize the environmental impacts over the Bridgewater Channel, utilizing existing right of ways and identified funding and the budget necessary for bridge construction. I'd like to go real quick through the procurement process in selecting the consultant. Basically, it was procurement's process for RFSQ selection. That is a request for statements of qualification for the design and CMAR administration of the construction. Procurement's RFSQ for design services was issued in June 2024. Three firms were submitted for that RFSQ. They were Kimley Horn, Michael Baker International and NV5 Incorporated. A six-member selection committee reviewed and independently scored the statements of qualifications and we actually selected all three firms for an interview. The selection committee and interview panel independently scored all three firms and upon scoring tabulation, NV5 selected, was selected as most qualified. And I might add that, that scoring was tabulated and collected by procurement to then, on August 26, procurement issued a selection notice to NV5 for professional services negotiations contract. As a result of professional services scope and fee were negotiated for the design at approximately 12% of estimated construction cost. That is design, that was the percentage of construction cost for design only. I just wanted to point that out. We typically try to look at those percentages of construction cost, both in design and then separately for construction. The major scope components, I want to add, in your packet, you have a Exhibit A, Scope of Work. It's, it's what, three, four pages, I believe, pretty detailed. I'm going to highlight that we have the major scope components here, Phase One of the pre-construction services, such as the survey, geotechnical investigation, preliminary alignments within the existing right of ways. We go through a 10 and 20% design submittals, not only for the roadway, but utility and the bridge components are all under design. The construction manager at risk, RFSQ is, is going to also occur during that pre-construction where we'll actually be running an RFSQ now for the contractor to come on board as part of a CMAR type contract. And then that, in that Phase One, will result in a 30% design with a GMP or Guaranteed Maximum Price Estimate, now that we have a CMAR contractor on board. Phase Two, much more intense in the design and environmental permitting. Major US Coast Guard permitting is going to occur. That's a 12-month period, I might add. And along during that, we'll have the 60 and 90% of the roadway, bridge and utility design submittals. And at each one of those, we'll be looking at that GMP estimate again to make sure we're, we're running within budget and then be able to run value engineering on some of that design so that if we, are we getting the best value of what we're going to build? And I might add, in that Phase Two, we're anticipating an early construction package. The bridge takes much longer. Permitting is still going on for the bridge itself, but we can break out different parts of the package, such as some intersection designs at the ends of the roadway and then also some of the utility infrastructure that we could break out early for the project. So we'll be identifying those also. And then of course, Phase Three, our construction services, pretty much, pretty straightforward, special inspections for bridge, progress meetings, documentation, substantial completion and the bridge opening. Here's this major milestones on our schedule. Seven months will be in the pre-construction to get to 30%, 30% design and the CMAR contracting. We have to run RFSQ advertising to get a CMAR contractor on board. We have a 12-month environmental permitting with US Coast Guard and other agencies. That is overlapped with while we're preparing the 100%. So while those environmental permitting aspects are happening and in process, we're also proceeding with design along the way to get to 100% completion. There, I'm showing November 2025 as typical where we would be ready for an early construction package of probably utility and roadway work in advance of the bridge itself. There's a 15-month construction period. Right now, we're estimating bridge completion in August of 2027. On the Second Bridge Project, the professional services contract, here's the numbers. Design and environmental permitting, like I said, was about 12% of construction cost, about 4.4 million. Construction and CMAR management, that is part of the scope for NV5 is our CMAR management, about 1.832 million. We have in, included an owner contingency here of about 315,000 to make up for unforeseen conditions that could possibly arise during the design. But total professional services fee of 6.623 million and $65. And I might add that the 6.6 million is inclusive of the 35.5 million total project funding. So it's not outside our project funding window is actually inclusive of it. Like I said, Kevin Murphy with NV5 is here this evening for any questions you might have or anything Kevin would like to add.
Well, good evening, Kevin Murphy, NV5. First thing I'd like to say, I'm very honored to be here. I mean, this is a project that my staff and I presented to council back in 2001 on this alignment. So it's, it's been a long time coming. Since 2007, when I was a consultant, I've been lucky to be involved in a lot of projects, including the Septic Sewer. In fact, Mark Elliott worked with me in the, one of our offices way back when, when the Septic Sewer Program was being finished up. So this isn't just NV5, just so you know, this is a conglomerate of other team members. The first one I'd like to mention is Jill Heims. She's an environmental permitting specialist. She's probably done 90% of the permitting along the river. A lot of your staff works with them. She was exclusive to our team because she felt very confident with us. The second was Joe Farre. He's with Sigma Engineering. He's, he's designed 35 bridges over the last five years. In fact, his expertise is recognized nationally. When the Baltimore Bridge went down, he spent six weeks out there helping them figure out how to best deconstruct that bridge. That's the kind of expertise he brings. And the one thing that we brought him on the team, because NV5 has structural engineers, but we brought him on because he talked about the necessity to have this architecture appealing to the city and how you can do that cost effectively economically. I know in the past you've seen bridges and this is what they look like. First thing he said, no, I can make that bridge look however you want. There's a lot of things we can do, design panels to make it look good, which keeps your costs down. And the third one is Lindsay Von Paris with GHD. You know, during the feasibility study, you talked about the intersections of both London Bridge Road and that McCulloch Boulevard. And quite frankly, we're concerned about the intersection of North or South Palaverdy and highway and how that's going to be affected coming down the London Bridge Road. So all that's included in our fee. But she is a national expert on connected streets, it's called. In fact, she was presenting at the National Traffic Engineers Conference right before she came here. So that's, that's our team, very proud of it. As in the past, I've tried to bring the best people I possibly can to the table when we, when we present to your staff. And so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Murphy. And Mr. Wolf, does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, it does, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, do we have questions or comments from members of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, councilmember Dolan?
I guess I'll jump right in and rip the Band-Aid off. If you'd have told me the state was going to give us 30 mil, $35 million to do something for our community and I had to make a list of 100 things I thought our community would need to make it better for everyone in Lake Havasu, I don't, this wouldn't make it on my list. I, I've always kind of supported the idea of the bridge because I never thought it'd be a realistic thing that we'd have the money for it. I just, I just don't think this is a, you know, we would make it sound like it's free money because it's state money and if, you know, and if we don't spend it, it goes back to the state and it goes to Maricopa and we don't want Maricopa to have our money. So let's build a bridge. I just don't think this is, I mean, because like I said, we're putting a bridge in on a man-made island, which I love the island and I think most of Havasu loves the island. As soon as this bridge goes in, the state's going to sell off all that land out there. We talk about giving away Havasu to developers. This opens the door for it. This is, our bridge, our island as we know it is pretty much gone. Yeah, we can kind of influence on the space and how we use it, but I don't know. I just, like I said, more roads, more, I just, I just don't think, and I said, I think maybe it's such a, I think this is such a big decision. This will change, it changes the Bridgewater Channel, it changes everything. I think this should go to a referendum for the people to make this decision because I don't feel comfortable make, I'm a no vote because I, I mean, I've thought about this long and hard for the last many months. And like I said, I just, I've only had a few people that say this is a great idea and they're people out on the island. Everyone I've talked to is like, can't you use that money for something else? Like, we need roads. No, we can't because it's tied to that. Maybe we can lobby Leo who put this together and help us repave Highway 95, but I'm a no vote on this. And like I said, I like to see it go to a referendum to the people because I just, I just don't see the benefit to the city, more roads we have to maintain and a second access to the island, to second homes, third homes. I just, I just don't see it. So that's my thoughts.
Yeah, thank you, councilmember Dolan. Just off of your comments, there are some, some good things that are happening besides just a bridge, which is redundancy in utility lines that are going across, some of the things that we don't have right now.
We do like that.
Yes, there are some benefits otherwise too, but absolutely appreciate your comments. I mean, to, you know, Representative Biassucci really led the effort on this. And although we've been in the city planning it since it sounds like 2001 or sooner, I mean, people since the 1970s have been talking about a second bridge. It's, the opportunity did come at a much quicker pace than, than we would have anticipated. But yeah, thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
Yeah, councilmember Lynn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to make some comments on councilmember Dolan's comments. I've been one of those people that throughout the years I've said, why do we need a second bridge? We have a three-lane bridge. If there's some sort of catastrophic event that's going on out on the island, we're not going to be letting people on the island anyway. So that would be a three-lane bridge to clear that, that island, which would not be that difficult. With that said, with the, the comments of the state selling off the land out there, they're going to sell it off. Sooner or later, they're going to sell it off. Whether we build a bridge or we don't build a bridge, they're going to sell it off. This way here, they're paying for the bridge because if they sell it off, we're going to need a second bridge. Do I think we need a second bridge today? No. Are we going to need a second bridge in the future? Yes. And once they sell all that land off, and this way here, they're paying for it. So, and if we don't do it now, we have to give them that money back. Yes, it is taxpayer dollars and it's, and it's earmarked for here. But once they sell that property off, then future councils, long after I'm in the ground, is going to have to build a bridge and it's going to cost a heck of a lot more than what this money's going to, going to cost us here. So I, my vote was swayed because I didn't think we needed a second bridge, but we will need it in the future because they will sell that land and this way here, they have to pay for it. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Lynn.
Mayor?
Councilmember Campbell?
Traffic studies, we saw them. It was part of the study that we did that showed in the next few years that we're going to have serious congestion issues on the highway. If anybody's been on the highway during a holiday weekend, you can clearly see we already have traffic issues. I do like the redundancy with utilities for sure, but when I had a nice conversation with Ryan from Sunt Construction, which is the contracting company that built the bridge in the first place, he said that building, bridge is 50 years old and there will be a time that we need to shut it down and do work on it. Look what we have going on already. We've had somebody run through the wall and I understand they ran through all the stuff again today, yesterday or the day before.
Didn't impact the bridge?
Yeah, and they drove out the other side. So the, the idea of saying that we don't need the second bridge, I'm having a hard time with that. And again, when your legislators, like he said, promise is made, promise is kept. The only reason why Mr. Biassucci went and fought for this funding is because he's been hearing about it since 1970s, how important this was and how many people that actually invested back in the day and the money was just disappeared. And so when do we finally, you know, like you said, rip the Band-Aid off? And, and you have the right to believe that, but I don't know what the discussion is right now. I think the discussion is this particular, not that if we want the bridge or not, I think we're past that, aren't we?
Yeah, well, it, what we have in front of us right now is a professional services agreement for, for programming, design and CMAR services for construction management for the Second Bridge to NV5 of Arizona. So that's what we're talking about today. But if, if someone is, one of our colleagues is not going to vote for things related to the, to this project because they don't like it, won't be the first time that a council member did that. So it's, I mean, that's, that's your prerogative if we're having a discussion now and I can respect each of, each of my colleagues' points on this item. But what we do have in front of us is a professional services agreement.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions before we open the public hearing?
Just real quick, Nancy, you added 10 years to Leo Biassucci. He was probably born in the 80s, not the 70s.
Have you guys all noticed they always have to have the last statement here? No, I got it. I got it this time.
All right, well, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
Unlike some of the other things that you folks have discussed tonight, I have a feeling that bridge will pay for itself because if the state sells off those properties on the island and homes get built there, there's going to be tax revenue and other stuff that comes along with it. And so I think building that bridge now will be money well spent for the future of the city and the expansion that you have in your master plan. So I think that bridge will pay for itself over a period of several years when those houses start getting built out on the island. And I agree, it's nice to have an island with a lot of open space on it, but as someone else pointed out, that land's going to get sold one way or another and someone's going to build on it. And so you're going to be charging them fees for building their stuff and taxes on what they build. So I think it'll pay for itself.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item?
Mayor and Council, before I get started, I'd like to point out that back in 2001, I was actually on Kevin Murphy's staff and worked on that same project. And that was when engineering was still at the Woods Building. And I used a very primitive version of AutoCAD on a huge computer to draw some of the same alignments we're talking about today. So it's kind of a cool moment for me that they tested the time, I guess. So it's kind of a cool moment for me that, they tested the time, I guess. Mayor and Council, my name is Greg Frostley. I'm a 26-year, 10-month resident of Lake Havasu City. 26 of those years I was employed by Lake Havasu City. In 17 of those years, I served as the city engineer. So I'm very familiar with the type of contracts that we're discussing tonight. Before I get into the contract, I wanted to touch on the, the fact that I think it's very unusual to switch design firms from a preliminary design to a final design, especially considering that we just spent $200,000 with a different firm. They spent six to eight months meeting with people, listening to the community, talking to you folks, identifying exactly what we wanted for our second bridge. They took that information and put it into what I thought was a very wonderful and comprehensive manual. They put cost models to it, but then they weren't selected for the final design. So NV5 came out of nowhere, which is great, but they must have had something really special to offer where somebody is intimate, with the intimate knowledge that the previous consultant had, didn't get selected. That's suspicious to me. But it's not unheard of, but it doesn't happen very often at all. So, you know, I'm curious to know what was so spectacular, what was so innovative? Did they bring an idea that nobody else had heard of before or presented before? Because this is a big deal. This is a big contract and those guys put a lot of work in and now they're just gone. So what I, what I see happening with this kind of move is we lose a lot of momentum, right? A lot of progress, momentum with our progress. Who knows what this is going to cost to get this new firm caught up to where that last firm left, left off and then get started again. So I think we lost a lot of time, we lost a lot of valuable knowledge just by switching. But I'm not on the selection committee, so I didn't have all the same details as everybody else had. And I see we're timing us now, so I'm going to put a pin in that and move on because I got a lot of issues with this contract. This is a lot of money. To be quite frank, I was anticipating a design contract around $3.5 million for this project. It's, it's just the design alone. Well, the entire thing is, is, is 12.6, but by the way, this 12% is actually 12.6 that Kevin talked about. That's for the design only and that's based on, if you do the math, a $38 million construction project, which means we're about $10 million short right now. If you take the 35.5 minus the 200,000 we already spent, minus the 6.6, for tonight's action, we're down to 28.5 million bucks. So we're short a lot of money before we can get started and that's kind of buried in all this, right? I don't really understand why we're putting construction, CM, construction manager, construction services contract with a, that's my phone, of course, with a design contract, considering that work doesn't even start at best for 20 months. And we're talking about a firm that's never worked here before. We have zero history with, with NV5. Right off the bat, I only looked at this for 15 or 20 minutes and found all kinds of fat. In particular, the owner's contingency, that does not belong on a professional services contract. I've never seen that my entire career. That's for the construction contract. In a design bid build, we call that the force account that you saw in all these. On the latest CMAR contract we did for this building, we had an owner's contingency with the contractor, not the designer. So that's pure fluff. I don't know what, why that would, would get in there. It looks like they've got almost a $600,000 design fee for wet utilities. That implies approximately a $6 million construction project for wet utilities. We do several miles of water main replacement for less than half of that design fee and we're just connecting existing pipes. So I don't understand why that's so high. And then the, the construction fees, he's got two lines for construction management service and another one for construction management. Those are not different things. We're hiring a construction manager at risk to manage the construction. We don't need project management because that's in the construction services to do what he talked about tonight, the special inspections, the pay application reviews, the weekly construction meetings. So it's a completely double dip. I thought maybe I was wrong, so I went to the scope of work to read what it was and it's not even covered. This is really loose scope of work. So those are my main things, you know, the, the, I understand you want to connect the utilities now because you're, you're building a new road and everything like that, but if you think about it, I had always envisioned installing the pipe, capping them and leaving their, them until we can design a real system to, to have this redundant water and sewer and effluent. Excuse me. The fact that that right away on the island is 200 feet wide and the cross-sections for the improvements, including edge-to-edge with the walking pass, that's only 70 feet. There's a lot of room to put utilities in, in the future after this bridge is done. So from an outsider's perspective, this just looks like a lot of fluff to drive up the cost. None of it's described in the scope of work. Matter of fact, the only detail you get in the scope of work is for the wet utilities. There's nothing, there's one paragraph for the construction management, so I don't know what, excuse me, I don't know what the project management is, but it's, in my eyes, construction services and design. You're about double what I think it should be. So I don't know how this gets all the way to council without anybody noticing this stuff. Like I said, 300 and how many thousand for a contingency? That it, what, what unforeseen circumstances are you going to find in a, a design contract? It's, it's a mistake in, in my eyes. No offense, Mike, but I don't, I've never seen it before. So.
Taken.
I've exhausted my time. I went through that really fast because there's a lot of problems with this. I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote for this. I would send it back to the staff if you're looking for some free advice. This is, this is one of the most consequential projects we're going to do and I've been involved in a lot of them here in Lake Havasu. This is not a very tight contract. I think you take construction management out of it, focus only on the design so everybody understands what, what's happening. There's so much hidden in here. And like I said.
Thank you, Mr. Frostley. We have your, your, your points now. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Would anyone else like to address the City Council on this item?
Mayor, Council. I gotta, got your pin over here. I got one positive about the bridge. I believe that it is something that we need to have. One, we have fire sprinklers on all the houses out there because we don't have a fire station out there. One way on, one way off. That's a reason. Water quality, is all the water, Mr. Wolf, is the water qua, is the water mains going to go up into the bridge or are we going to stay under with the sewer and effluent? Is that all going to come up into the bridge? And then the other question that I have is, is there going to be a safe pedestrian and bicycle zone that is barriered or pillared or guardrails to be able to keep vehicles from coming across that zone and hitting the bridge or falling off of the bridge? Even if it is not hitting the bridge on the side of the bridge? Does the new bridge have that concept? I mean, I didn't see the design on that.
It does.
Yeah, I didn't see the design.
It does have that.
Okay.
Those components to it as well.
So, so if that, if that is true, then why isn't our bridge been upgraded since it's been hit multiple times? I mean, that's, that's an easy question. We could put pillars in there, we could put guardrails in there, we could do some metal designs, whatever the engineering's do. When I worked for the city and we put the reese on there, back in 2012, I asked this question and I was told it was because we have to drive up on the curb to put the reese over the bridge. So, bridge has been damaged, somebody has not, somebody hasn't been hit yet or fallen off, but if they would have went on the other side, it would have went through Burgers by the Bridge and they would have had a drive-through now. I mean, it's sad to say, but you should never be able to touch the bridge. We don't have that many more pieces.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the City Council on this item? All right, CNN will go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for additional discussion. Mr. Wolf, can you talk a little bit about that owner, owner contingency? That's part of the proposal?
As I said, Mayor, it is for unforeseen conditions, so we're not here at council asking for an amendment and whatnot. It was a discussion topic that came up during the negotiation phase. A couple of what-ifs were discussed and we actually discussed a higher owner contingency, but we settled on 5%. And that was basically, it, believe me, it, I might say, when, when I was bringing this before council and in the process of negotiation for the contract, it wasn't just Mike Wolf. I can, you can rest assured of that. We had several leaders within Public Works as part of our internal committee discussing and looking at the contingencies that could come up. We felt 5% was fair. It, I can say, and, and, and to Greg's comment about it's typically not found in a design contract, however, this is a $6.6 million contract. And so it can come up any time between tonight or, or after the award or all the way into August of 2027. That is part of NV5 or the owner's contingency in this. So we have three years to work with the budget and what we have and what might come up. But I, I might add, it is an owner's contingency and so it needs to be authorized and justified. We will go through quite an extensive value engineering, I might add, in this process of, of getting to the final construction cost of what we're going to be dealing with. So there will be plenty of opportunities at the 30, 60, and 90% and also to work with the value engineering on that. I, I hope I answered that.
Yeah, you did. And then is owner contingency and force account, are they interchangeable words?
They, they can be, but typically you don't find force account in a design contract, however. You find force account in a construction contract and we will have a C-MAR or contractor contingency when we negotiate that contract with them, yes.
With the same $315,000?
No, that will be separate. This will, this is a design contingency only. And, and design, I'm going to say design and construction management contingency because this is a contingency that, like I said, from award all the way to bridge opening, that contingency stands and can be utilized but only by the owner to the design consultant.
And the, when it comes to the project management, the construction management services, can you explain the two differences there?
Yes, so construction management on, on, we have construction phase services, which is broken down into a couple of places. What, what we have found that is ever so critical in a C-MAR contract is that the designer, the design consultant, whether it be this building, whether it be any C-MAR, is, that's the right person to have doing the C-MAR management, is managing on a regular basis, on progress schedules and everything, managing the contract, managing the contractor along the way. And, and, and so that expertise is not found within city staff at this point. So we rely, we are paying for it, we are relying on that consultant heavily. And going through and negotiating with the NV5 on this particular item, we actually worked with NV5's C-MAR construction group. And this is very large, these are very well-experienced construction managers that manage C-MAR contracts all over the country right now. So in, in talking about, you know, the size of the firm and, and whatnot, we were relying heavily on that construction management group to help us with that C-MAR. And then you have your other construction management services, which all fall under testing. I just might add RFI type of construction management, full-time inspection, part-time inspector onsite for the duration of the contract, and then any special inspections that might be necessary. So there's construction phase services that we're getting, but we are adding and emphasizing the C-MAR construction manager. And so we're relying heavily on NV5 for that. They do have, they do have a separate fee, I believe, for those listed in Exhibit B in your packet tonight. We have construction management services, but we also have, if I can find it here, we have them in the project management portion, yes.
Thank you. Are there questions from other members of the council?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I apologize. I'm just, I want to be, I want somebody to clarify this. So we started with one company to give us a feasibility study for 200,000. That's correct. And then we had our review committee look over three. Why did we switch? Like, what was the reasoning for switching? I feel like we're going backward a little bit.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll give you just a little bit of how the funding mechanism came in and then if Mr. Wolf or Mr. Coniston has anything to add. So the funding mechanism came in and legislative year, Representative Biassucci was able to secure $200,000 through a Senate bill that was to do the feasibility study. Baker Tilly was the company that, that did that. They were the one that got the successful contract to be able to move forward with it. You might recall during coffees with the mayor or during some of these discussions, I would talk about how it's going to be kind of this awkward interaction because we're, we, subsequent to that, then Representative Biassucci and Senator Borelli with Representative Gillette were able to get the 35.5 million dollars just the next year. And so we originally were planning to do the $200,000 feasibility study, give that back to the state, which then the state would work to get the funding for the actual bridge. Again, Representative Biassucci saw an opening and he took it and he was able to secure 35.5 million dollars. So we are concurrently doing the requirements of Senate bill, I, I can't remember the exact number, but the Senate bill to get the $200,000 in order to get the 35.5 million. So we had to check that box in order to do that. Baker Tilly, or Michael Baker, excuse me, was the company that was selected to do that. They did submit some of the qualifications, as I understood it from Mr. Wolf's presentation. There was independent, there was a panel that met and interviewed the three people. So three people submitted an opportunity to want to do this. Kimberly Horn, Michael Baker International, and NV5 are the three that came in. The selection committee decided, let's interview all three, let's see what they have to do. They then independently, so outside of their group, they all scored, sent them into procurement. And again, this is just what I heard this evening, so if I need correction, let me know. They then, procurement rated the, the outcomes of the tabulation and said that NV5 was, was the one to be selected. It was never determined that Michael Baker would see this all the way through. They saw the, they saw the opportunity and did the feasibility study. They had the opportunity to come through, they, they weren't successful in, in this iteration, but that's how that happened. Or does that answer your question, Councilmember Lane?
Yes, it does. Did the other companies, did they give us a quote also? Did they give us a bid? I'm just curious.
So as I understood it from this evening, is that after procurement tabulated the results from the independent, or from the committee doing it independently, then they issued the ability to negotiate firms. But Mr. Coniston, maybe you can clarify technically what that meant?
Sure. Mayor Sheehan, Councilmember Lynn, so a little bit of frustration in terms of city's ability to solicit bids from contractors such as this for professional services. State statute says, cities and towns, when you go out and solicit proposals, you cannot ask for a price. So it's, it's one of the things where we're not choosing to go through this process, but we're following state statute, we're following state law. but we're following state statute, we're following state law and what that looks like. We talk a lot about, you know, we distribute a request for proposals, an RFP proposal, that means we can seek bids on that project. State statute says if you're going to request proposals for professional services, such as design services, it's a request for qualifications. It's an RFQ, which means you can ask them about the other qualifications, their experience, their understanding of Lake Havasu, their understanding of the scope of work, and those types of approaches. And then there's a selection committee that takes place through the proposal process. We bring them in, all three firms, we interview them, and then go through that process. And then through that process, we identify one as the, that's in the best situation to do business with Lake Havasu City. At that point, city team, city staff enters into negotiations and goes into great detail about, okay, here's the scope of work, here's the pricing, and what does that look like? If the city team, or at the council level, but normally it's handled at the city team level, determines that that price is way too high, we don't want to do business with you, then at the city, we just hit pause with that, those negotiations, and then start all over with number two. It's a very belabor process that we have to go through. There's reasons and justification why. We'd love to be in a better position for us to determine costs of projects without state statute kind of getting in the way a little bit there. But that's the process where we'll complain about it, but we'll obviously abide by the state law.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for that. In all respect to Mr. Frosley, you know, he did work for the city for a very long time and has been looking at this project, and the words fluff on certain things, that does concern me. Is there a way that we could have those concerns, which I think are legit concerns, as Mr. Frosley, as a former employer, and also a constituent here, to send that, these concerns back to staff to look at this organization and maybe discuss some of those concerns with them before we vote tonight? Because I don't want to say no on something, because I do think that this bridge is something that we need, but with the concerns that Mr. Frosley brought up, I would like to see what staff has to say about that.
I would ask staff right now, what do they have to say about that? So, you know, we're here to do the business. So, I mean, I'm not in favor of pushing something back. Like, we're here, we're doing the business. Mr. Frosley brought up some points. What questions do you have? Our staff is here and ready to answer them based on those. I mean, I've read through the scope. I certainly don't build bridges every day and don't vote on issues to build bridges, but it seems reasonable for what's happening here. Now, as far as the payment schedule, I think what our action here tonight is we're authorizing the amount of the spend, but it's not actually paid. It's paid the way I read the scope and as certain benchmarks are made. Is that correct, Mr. Wolf?
Absolutely.
Okay. And who makes that determination if they've met that benchmark?
Right now, it'd be the engineering and public works division.
Our staff. We make that decision.
Yes. So whether they met those milestones correctly, whether we send it back for revision, we do have review opportunities at every day.
And, you know, the current team isn't new to Lake Havasu either. Mr. Murphy was a former Public Works Director in Lake Havasu City, and Jill Heims has done so much work in our community. I don't know the other two personally, but I do know of the work that Mr. Murphy and Ms. Heims has done in our area and for our community. So, I mean, are there any other specific questions you may have, Councilmember Lynn, to clarify?
I've never built a bridge either, so I guess my question to Mr. Wolf, are you, do you have any of the same concerns that Mr. Frosley has?
I do not.
I have questions.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Moses? Yeah, Vice Mayor Moses, then we'll go down, Councilmember Campbell after.
Do you remember, and I know, because I can't remember either, so it's a lot to expect, but we did C Mar on this building, right? What percentage of this building did we put up for design and construction management?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Moses, this building was a little bit different. So we did do C Mar, but that was a brand-new process that was introduced at the time for this project. We started off as a design bid build. So we did the design. We had lots of questions that were coming from the public. We had lots of questions coming from the council, and rightfully so, what, you know, where were we at in terms of budget, and it's going to cost $30 million, and, you know, all those conversations that were occurring. So the strategy that I introduced at that time was, okay, pause. We did the design, but it's time to pause the project. There's lots of concerns in the public, there's lots of concerns about council, so let's pause. And then we introduced the C Mar process after the design had already started. So we didn't, it wasn't a traditional C Mar. So that's a little bit different in that regard. We went through a full-blown design. God, I forget what percentage we were at, further along than traditionally we should have been through a C Mar process. But in the end, what we love about C Mar, construction management at risk, is that you hire the architect, you hired the design team, and then you hire the contractor right afterwards. You put them both in the room, and we figure out between the design team and the contractor, what's going to be the cost in the construction, in this case for the bridge. And then we get the magic words, guaranteed maximum price. We get a guaranteed maximum price contract that we can bring to council, share with the public, and introduce that. A very long-winded response, but it's different. And the reason why we paused it was to come back and get those three words, the guaranteed maximum price contract. Yeah, we are going, I'll be really brief on this point, and maybe we have some numbers that we can share off the cuff, maybe have to introduce them a little bit later. We are going through the same process, C Mar for Fire Station 7. So we got the design team, and now we're soliciting, I think the bids are due this week, or the last, this week, on the construction side, right? So we're about to go through that process, the exact same C Mar process, construction management, design, the whole thing that'll take place in Station 7. So, Mr. Wolf, if you have numbers on that percentage of design, that we're talking about a bridge versus a fire station?
Because fire station is very similar with Pearlman, very similar numbers as far as percentage-wise. Timing-wise, we're getting everything coming in at us, saying we need the C Mar onboard at 30% or even before, whereas that was so much different from this courthouse, yes.
So you don't remember? Sorry, that was funny. You had to be there. Is 12% a reasonable, I mean, have other C Mar projects, paint a picture to me where 12% is a reasonable percentage of design and construction management?
Mr. Wolf?
I can say it's design only, the 12%. The construction management's, another add, is the construction management administration, I think total with both, were about 18%, a little bit higher, but that's all within some norms, at least what used to be norms within ACEC, had charts and tables on percentages for design and construction management on complex projects. This is a complex project, I might add.
So 18% is where we're at, total of the 35.5?
Correct.
Can I, while you're doing the calculations and stuff too, I think it's important, Mayor Shi, Vice Mayor Moses, is we're not just talking about a bridge. So if we're talking about a bridge, then this price comes down drastically, and the percentage comes down drastically. If you just want to do a bridge and road network and connect to London Bridge Road and McCulloch, this price comes way down. And if we want to do that, that's certainly council's prerogative and the prerogative of the community. What we're trying to accomplish with this is a all-encompassing approach to the construction of a second bridge in the area that is not just the road network, the bridge, but we're going to change traffic flows throughout the community with introducing a second bridge. What are the impacts going to be on the island side, and what does that look like in terms of stop signals and all the rest? That design component is within the percentage. We're not just talking about the design of a bridge. It would be unjustous to say that that was the case. We're also talking about the utilities on the design side. So we have a large infrastructure. We have lines that was identified within the scope of work of sewer lines that run through, underneath the channel in the vicinity of the proposed project, in that project area. We have water lines in that area as well, too. We talked earlier about the wastewater master plan. One of the great things about Havasu is we're connected. All three of our wastewater treatment plants are connected. We have lines that connect them, and where do those lines go? In this case, we have sewer and water infrastructure that is under the channel. The condition is something that we can't monitor on a regular basis. We certainly don't want a sewer break that could take place in the channel area, so that's something that we've talked about. The need for this project is not just a connection for transportation and evacuation as determined from a traffic loop perspective. How do we get that sewer line out from underneath the channel and draped on this bridge in a way that makes sense? So we're looking at not just the design of a bridge. You can't just take, if we take out the intersection design area, if we take out the utilities, that price drops quite a bit. I think the utilities side, if we took that out in terms of the design, you're nearing, Mr. Wolf, between $500 and $1 million probably, just on the design side on the utilities, if we didn't want to address that as part of this project.
Right now, the design of the utility infrastructure, which is a listing of what water and wastewater felt they needed for their total redundancy and supply and demand out there for utilities, is running about $785,000 for the design of just the utilities, yes.
I just want to put it all in perspective. We're talking about design for not just the bridge, not just the road network, but the intersections and as well as the utilities. So that's the approach we're talking about.
Yeah, that information's all in Exhibit B. You can see the different items there. Does that conclude your comments?
I think so.
Vice Mayor? All right, Councilmember Campbell?
Okay. I want to remind everybody that I'm a designer, and I'm in the construction business, and we do a lot of jobs, and we do C Mars, and we do designs. We don't do the designs, but I am absolutely surprised at these prices, and I am absolutely surprised that construction services are at 1.8 million after pre-construction services. I told, I reached out to two other companies that actually build bridges, a lot of them, and I asked them, what do you think about the C Mar? Where do you think, should I be voting yes on this? They said absolutely not, is what they told me, absolutely not. They said, on average, the design service portion is all that you should be discussing at this point. That is it, nothing else. We should just do design up to 30%. Obviously, we're going to get the design services through NV5, leave it at that, get to 30%, because then we send it out to C Mar. A C Mar is the construction risk management contractor that will be probably picked through NV5. Sometimes contractors don't like certain project managers at certain jobs. That's where an architect, a designer, I mean, the designer and the contractor all come together and have a conversation. And they say, this is our budget. It's $35.5 million, and we got to stay within this, because this is what we promised Lake Havasu City citizens. This has been, this was identified to be within the $28 million. They knew about the extra intersections as well. This included roadway. This is not a rocket science bridge. I know you guys say, this is huge. I beg to differ, and I'm not a bridge builder myself, but my husband does own, has a contracting license to build bridges, so I probably have a little bit more knowledge than most up here, and I'm not trying to deny it. I'm just trying to say I've had a lot of conversations about this. And what we're saying is we should be just discussing about the design services. And once, write the check for the 22.5 million, get to 30%, send it out to a C Mar, and have the C Mar, the contractor, decide how much of this work they want to take on. How much do they want to do to make sure that we are within budget? Because as Mr. Frosley is saying, I am looking at this, too, just to relocate our utilities could be millions and millions and millions of dollars. I do agree with the conversation that I had with somebody today, and it was, oh, it was yesterday with Jess and Foggins yesterday, which was, you really want to make sure that roadway infrastructure is in place. You got your pipes there, you're prepared to hook up this utility. That makes sense to me. I know already, when we looked at the study, I remember it, they showed already that the bridge was going to be prepared to hold utilities. I don't know of a bridge anywhere that isn't prepared to hold utilities. And the actual people that did this, the bakers, knew what size all the sewer, water, all the fluid, they already knew what all the pipe sizes are going to be. So if you go back and look at that study, it was very efficient. Murphy, you were on that. You were helping to consult that. I thought that was a great study, a great first step in a great direction. And I'm now looking at this, and I will not vote for this. I will vote for just the design services, and that is it. So that's just where I'm at. If you guys think that we should be putting project managers, this is putting this bid well over 20%, which is unheard of. And what I'm saying is basically at that 28%, $28 million that we were told in the feasibility study. So I'm sorry, but you need to get your C Mar in place, and you need to have conversations with them, how we can offer a bridge to the Lake Havasu City citizens at the price that we wanted. And as for the utility portion of it, that is a different budget altogether. We've already talked about that. That is an investment account, enterprise fund, that's a capital improvement. Absolutely, we can afford to put the initial plumbing and infrastructure that we need to hook up to something later. But this is going to be a $50 million project, and I am absolutely sure the citizens of Lake Havasu City are not going to be happy. And Jim Dolan, Mr. Dolan, Councilmember Dolan, is going to get an applause for voting no. So I say that we wheel it way back, you guys, and let's just talk about the design, get it to 30%, and let's start the renegotiations, or it's a no for me.
Councilmember Lynn?
That was my soapbox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first off, just a few things that I wanted to address. We hired a company for a feasibility study, and that feasibility study was, do we need a bridge? Should we build a bridge? And we went out to bid, and we picked, and we contracted, and we interviewed, and our staff came out with the best company that they could come up with in order to do a feasibility study, and we appreciate all the hard work they did. Once that finished, then we went out to bid for a construction contract, not a feasibility contract, but a construction contract. And that same company also put in a bid, as did some other companies. And then our city staff looked at all the bids, and they negotiated with people, and they came up with what they feel is the best construction company. And we're not bridge builders. We don't know what we're doing when it comes to building bridges. None of us do. So we are looking, and we're relying on our staff to come up with a company that we feel is a professional company. We heard the qualifications from Mr. Murphy on several of the people that are working on this project, and I appreciate the fact that our city staff has done so much hard work on this. So then it comes down to, we're not bridge builders. We're not contractors. We don't negotiate with the contractors. We don't negotiate the contracts. So we have to rely on our city staff and trust our city staff. Mr. Wolf was asked, do you have any of these same concerns? He said, no, he does not. I, myself, I trust our city staff to do what's in the best interest of this city when they are doing negotiations. Mr. Foggan runs that organization over there. They're doing great work. Mr. Wolf worked on this, along with a bunch of other people on our staff. I trust our staff that they have got the best contract that they can get, and they have the best interest of this city at heart, and that they are doing what is best for the people of Lake Havasu City, and they're bringing it to us on whether or not we think we should do this contract. So if people want to vote no, great, vote no. If you want to vote yes, great, vote yes. But my thoughts are, I trust our staff to do the best work that they can do, because I'm not an expert at it. Mr. Murphy and his staff are experts at building bridge. Our Public Works Department that is doing that negotiation, along with our procurement, they're the experts in those negotiations, and I trust them. And that's bottom line for me. Thank you.
Mayor, point of clarification?
Yes, Councilmember Campbell?
This is not a construction contract in front of us. It's a design contract.
Correct. Correct.
Has nothing to do with the contractor yet. We have yet to even have a conversation with the contractor because we haven't gotten a 30% design to gather to even get it to a contractor. So no offense, but it's a point of clarification.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember?
It's a contract with a contractor to do the design for the bridge. It's a matter of semantics, but thank you.
All right, I'm looking forward to the opportunity to vote. So would someone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I motion.
Okay.
I motion to accept the design project and design number, phase number two, design services only.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Campbell. We have a second from Councilmember Lynn. Ms. Gary, is that, do you understand what?
I understand the motion. I just don't know that, I mean, that's not how drafted and that's not how we bid it and that's not how they provided the proposal to us. So I mean, if that's the direction, we'll go back and see if we can do any of that. But right, sitting here right now, I'm not prepared to say that that's okay that we can do. I just.
I would like to amend my motion and my motion would be for the staff to take it back and review our concerns. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilmember Campbell, a second from Councilmember Lynn to have staff take it back to address concerns brought up tonight. So we will go to vote on that. If you vote yes on that, this will go back to staff. If you vote no on that, then we can entertain a second motion for consideration this evening. We.
And my first and second's off, so we need to fix that.
Yeah, Ms. Williams, I think is working on that right now. And Mr. Wolf, did you have something?
I did. When you say typically part of the negotiation and part of the process that city managers brought up tonight, if negotiations have failed, next steps could be to go to the next design firm for negotiating that contract. And so direction from this motion on what staff is to do, go back to the board with, yeah, go back to the board with NV5 and negotiate staff, council's concerns.
Yes.
Mayor amendment.
Correct.
What he said.
Yeah, well, we don't, yeah, we don't get to do that. So we have a motion and we have a second and we're going to see that through. So. How about just grab, grab the second, Councilmember Campbell on the screen, we'll vote and then Ms. Williams can make that change. Yeah. All right, so we have a motion from Councilmember Campbell, a second from Councilmember Lynn. A yes vote sends us back to staff for renegotiation and a no vote would allow us to entertain a different motion. Ms. Williams now does have it correct on the screen, so we are ready to vote.
Motion fails five to two.
Thank you. Do we have another motion to entertain?
Mayor, motion.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to award the agreement for the professional services for the programming design CMAR services and construction management for the second bridge to NV5 of Arizona in the amount of $6,623,065.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane. We have a second from Councilmember Koch. Any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries four to three.
Thank you. Item 7.9 is Amendment Number Two to the Cooperative Purchase Agreement with Holbrook Asphalt LLC and purchase of HA5 High Density Mineral Bond Pavement Preservation Services for fiscal year 2425. Good evening, Mr. Young.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here to ask you to approve approximately 174,000 square yards of HA5 put onto our new asphalt. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. I'm here tonight to ask for you to approve us to put some HA5 in the total amount of about 174,000 square yards on our new asphalt that's going down and some of our older asphalt as well. HA5 is a sealant that lasts four to seven years when put down. We first put it down on Main Street here and it is doing quite a good job, both from heat and as its cooling. So going forward, I would like your permission to approve Amendment Number Two Cooperative Purchase Agreement with Holbrook Asphalt in the amount of $5,577,656.46.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Are there any questions from members of the council from Mr. Young? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor, motion.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, I move to approve Amendment Number Two to the Cooperative Purchase Agreement for Holbrook Asphalt LLC. Authorize the city manager to execute the amendment and authorize expenditures for the fiscal year 2024 through 25 HA5 High Density Mineral Bond Pavement Preservation Services in the amount of $577,656.46.
Second.
Of a motion from Vice Mayor Moses. We have a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.10 is Construction Contract to Pioneer Earthmovers, Inc. for the Dixant Parking Lot Project.
Mayor, I'm going to recuse.
All right, Councilmember Campbell is going to recuse herself from this item. Turn it over to you, Mr. Young.
Good evening again. This project actually is a little close to my heart. Street Department's been working on it for a couple of years. We did all the grading on it, we put in the medians, the electrical conduit, curbs and kind of fell a little short of getting it done last year. So we got it out this year to bid to get the asphalt around the pickleball courts in the back section. And we put it out to bid and Pioneer Earthmovers came in considerably lower than the other three bidders at $139,480 plus applicable taxes. Like your approval on that so we can move forward and get that done.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Young. It's a great project and great enhancement out there, so. Any questions or comments from members of the council? Are we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for possible motion?
Mayor, motion.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to award the construction contract for the Dixant Parking Lot Project to Pioneer Earthmovers, Inc. for a total amount of $139,480 plus applicable taxes. Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? We're ready to vote.
Motion carries with six council members voting aye and one council member kuzel.
Thank you. And our final public hearing this evening is continue with construction of the traffic signal at McCulloch Boulevard and Jamaica intersection. Mr. Wolf?
Mayor and Council, this project is coming back before you. It's been here twice before in settling the intergovernmental agreement utilizing highway safety improvement funds from the state. The project includes the signalization of McCulloch Boulevard and at Jamaica and also some other safety improvements. This is basically the title sheet to the plans. It shows the two project areas. One dot at the top end is the actual intersection. Sorry, the roadway network didn't show up as clear, but that is where the intersection is. And then also included in the project because of highway safety, they found the speeds along McCulloch Boulevard near Eldorado needed some warning. We had high speeds, so we have speed feedback signs being placed in that lower section of McCulloch as part of the project. The project's coming back to you at this time for a bid award recommendation and funding. Two bids were received by ADOT Northwest District on September 6th. ADOT's construction estimate was 745,277 for the signal and improvements. That amount was incorporated into the IGA for the AHC funds. The low bid from Combs Construction Company of Glendale came in in the amount of 1.25211 million, significantly higher than ADOT's estimate for the project. Unfortunately, in this case, per the intergovernmental agreement, anything beyond what was in the, listed in the intergovernmental agreement at the time, the city is responsible for the overages. And in this case, it would be for the construction and a small contingency they have in the total amount of $531,810. The ADOT, ADOT's response basically was they're going to send an invoice to the city for 531810 and if we pay it, they will award the contract and build the signal. The estimated schedule of that project is we've had to, because of council meeting and getting your approval, we had to take no action at the October Transportation Board meeting, no action and carry that award to the November meeting. And so right now, it's scheduled to go to the 2024 Arizona Transportation Meeting and that is of course upon your approval tonight for the additional funds. Anticipated notice proceed if it goes to the November board. By the way, they'll start project around January of the new year. So the award recommendation and I might add, we've, we've worked, tried to work closely within our CIP for availability of this additional funding and worked closely with finance to work out details and the award recommendation tonight would be to approve the payment of 531810 of the city HERF funds in order to allow the award of the signalization and safety improvements to the apparent low bidder, Combs Construction Company, Inc. of Glendale. It's quick, I just, I can open it up now. Any questions council may have?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Are there questions for Mr. Wolf? Councilmember Campbell?
I'm just concerned, it says bid amount for department, Phoenix. I've never heard of that and it says 745,000. What does that mean? I'm confused.
I'm sorry. That's what ADOT's construction estimate, working with their consultant that designed the project, they put together the, the signal, the design and all the improvements and came up with their, basically their construction estimate, you know, total fees for design and everything else excluded. I'm leaving that out of the conversation. It was really, this construction estimate was, I'm going to say significantly lower than the actual bid that was opened.
And if I understand it correctly, that you added some scopes of work with the Eldorado Crossing?
No, ma'am.
That's not in that?
You know, that is in the 745, those.
Well, it wasn't there too.
Yes, it was.
Wow, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
I'm going to say yes on this project because it's definitely me there, but I just have a question. If we were to put this traffic signal in ourselves and not do this intergovernmental agreement with ADOT, how much would it cost?
Here's the situation. We've, we've bid larger projects. We typically try and bid larger projects to include a bigger scope. Hence, for example, the city core project recently, larger street projects and water projects, you get an advantage of a better price. This is, one signal is a very specialized type of work, signal poles, bed crossing, striping. What we found, and I believe there was an analysis in your packet, what we found was some, there was a grouping of bid items and it was basically all surface restoration type work, the pavement, the base, the grading to get the subgrade in and the sidewalks, the concrete and the ramps. I'm going to say they were above the norm of what we see when we bid those items in a much bigger pavement project. When we bid small little intersection projects and things like that, they get more expensive just because it's a big force in a small area. So to answer your questions directly, I think we would have found a way to do either some work in-house or added some bid alternates in the project. This project does offer one advantage in that after the award, and this is what we've understood and asked the question, after the award of the project, should the city want to negotiate and sit down and negotiate a change order that reduces the scope such that it reduces the dollar amount? My best understanding at this point is that money would go back to the city as a credit towards the contract. So.
Mr. Wolf, I.
I'll answer for you.
Okay, I appreciate the long answer. I just want to know what the cost would be, what the difference is if we did it or we didn't do it with ADOT.
Yeah, it's about, as I understand it, like $700,000 or so. So this and the Hawk on a coma are two things, we're using some of these grant.
Oh, yes.
That are very costly.
I did a lot of research on that Hawk, a lot. Okay, thank you.
It's unfortunate. The savings is, it's unfortunate the way it's coming down, but it is a necessary intersection to be able to signal at this point and we still are saving about $100,000 of our money. Again, all of this money is taxpayer dollars at some level. It's very frustrating for all of us, but it's a safety project that is necessary up in that area of the neighborhood. Any other questions or comments before I open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion? Yeah, Councilmember Koch?
Motion.
Please.
I move to approve the continuation of the construction of the traffic signal and the payment of $531,810 to ADOT.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Koch and we have a second from, Councilmember Lynn? Yeah, whoever hits the button, Councilmember Campbell. Okay, so we have a motion from Councilmember Koch, a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? All right, seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item eight is our call to the public. This is where citizens have the opportunity to address the city council on any items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. We ask that you address council directly. Your comments are limited to three minutes. Again, this is the section that we can't have a two-way conversation, but we can listen intently to whatever your comments may be. You don't have to sign up, but we did have one member, Mr. Lacy, if you would like to. Okay? Okay. Yeah.
All right, so here we go. Mayor and council, welcome. So I got here for you guys, our lovely London Bridge here. It is, unfortunately, it's been hit multiple times in the last couple of years. You can see some dates down here for instances. All I could do is look up and find out what codes are for safety for bicycles and pedestrians. So I looked it up, it's in FHWA dot backslash gov. It has right down here, it says, any roadway upon which a bicycle lane is not designated and which may be legally used by bicycles regardless of weather, facility, design as a bikeway. Okay? So if we got that, then we got a bikeway. So that's what we need at the bridge, the new bridge and the old bridge. So second is part G pedestrian walkway and bicycle, a continuous way designed for a pedestrian separated from the through lanes of motor vehicles by space or barrier. We use space and you can see it has not worked for us because our bridge has been damaged multiple times throughout the year, throughout the years. Go Lake Havasu said that one resident for 25 people visitors, if we take 50,000 people, that's. If we take 50,000 people, that's one point, 1,250,000, you divide that by four per car is 312, 312,500 people that are moving around. And our main thing here is the London Bridge. They aren't going to the sewer plant and they aren't going to the water plant. So here we go. So I took this little class. It's called, it's a course in bicycle, pedestrian traffic for the FHWA course. And inside their third page in, it says right here, it says bridges should be placed in to eliminate the possibility of falling into roadways or over the bridge. So these are all part of the federal act. So we'll switch, we'll switch over real quick because this is for everybody to see. This is the last one that happened. This is back in 14. This is in 20 when the off-road truck almost ran over and landed in the bridge on the bottom. These are our DUIs from the other night. But we have bridges that go all the way across our valley. And over in Bullhead, we have a new bridge that was incorporated. You can see there's a designated lane here for that. I'll be done in just a second. There's a designated bicycle lane just right down the street from the London Bridge right now that's on the 95. That's right there. They won't let anyone go across that zone. So why don't we do that for the bridge? That's all. There's pillars designs, belliards are called. The, yeah, the Los Angeles Sixth Street Bridge was designed in like 1932. It was redesigned in 1920, 2022 and they went from blink to a full-blown, like nice zone area that's safe for everybody to get through and not die. Okay? So that's all. I hope we can find money because I don't know where you guys got money at since we've been giving it all away for all these other projects. But this one was, this one was.
Thank you, Mr. Lacy.
This one was started in 1971. We haven't fixed it.
Thank you, Mr. Lacy. Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public?
Good evening, council. I really appreciate you guys. Really love that you're going to lower the fees for the aquatic center for the kids. Completely love that. I just would like to say though, in, as a pedestrian who goes over the bridge and walks over the bridge many times, I will tell you that it is, the, the bridge itself is dangerous sometimes, especially at night to walk on. And drunk drivers really do not help. Those drunk drivers are crazy. But the crosswalk lights are not, I'm really sorry to tell you, but if you guys are, have never gone, well, the mayor may have, I don't know about the rest of you, but if you haven't gone over the bridge at night, either direction, it is really dark on the bridge itself at night, which is a nice thing. Oh, also, recently when I've gone over the bridge, I, I really would like to encourage you guys maybe lowering the speed limit of the bridge. Instead of that whole 30 miles an hour over the bridge, maybe go 25. You know, maybe put a sign over there somewhere that just says, hey, take a deep breath as you're crossing the London Bridge. Like kind of remember all the history and the past and the things that we should be grateful for when you drive over that bridge. Like just, it's a five-second drive. Just take a deep breath, slow down, enjoy it. Don't hit the pedestrians. Just want to recommend some of those. And like I said last time, the crosswalk, you, as a pedestrian, when you walk up to it, if you don't walk up to the crosswalk in the right, in the right direction, you do not see the sign that says push button here to let the lights and the drivers know, dude, you need to stop for the people in the crosswalk. Obviously, the drunk driver had drunk issues. However, I don't drink and when I go over the bridge, there are times I really have to strain to make sure I'm not hitting anybody because people just pop out. They don't push the button so I can see them with the flashing lights. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public? All right. Seeing now, we'll close the call to the public. Item nine is current events. Are there any current council committee reports? Vice Mayor Moses?
I just got a couple of quick updates from the PED. They've been working with a local manufacturing company to expand their services. They're going to be going out to the GAVI Business Park, a big 15,000 square facility and really cool. It's exciting to see that kind of thing expand. You know what I mean? And then they are also, I believe they just reviewed the bids for the expansion of the nomadic. So they're, they're looking to expand offices there. It's because there's been such high demand. And then we talked about a little bit during Go Lake Havasu, but they made an investment in Placer AI, which is some, a really cool tool to see, to really kind of see the, in real time with the ROI on some of these events or, or different things that they do. But they saw like First Friday brought down 4,300 people down to the downtown area. So with a dwell time of two hours and 12 minutes is what, is what they're able to see. So really cool stuff and it's cool to see, they're able to see the efforts of, of everything that they're doing to, to help with downtown or any of the events that come to, come to our town. And then First Friday also won a couple of awards that they're pretty proud of, Best Art Exhibit and Best Local Event, second best local event. I'm sorry. But yeah, just want to keep you guys up to date about what's going on at PED.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Moses. Any additional council committee updates? All right. Item 10 is our future meetings. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, November 12th, 2024 at 5:30 PM. It will be a regular meeting. And then on Tuesday, November 26th, 2024 at 5:30 PM, we will also have a regular meeting. And that is also the meeting that we swear in our new council member-elect Diaz and we say goodbye to Councilmember Lane. So that will be on November 26th at 5:30 PM. Item 11, are there any future discussion items? Item 12, motion to adjourn? All right, we're adjourned. Thanks for being here. Be kind. We'll see you next time.